Good morning, everybody, and welcome to the Committee on General Welfare. At this time, we ask that you please place phones on vibrate or silent mode. And just as a reminder, nobody is allowed to approach the dais during the hearing. We appreciate your cooperation, Chair. We are ready to begin.
Thank you, and good morning, everyone, and welcome to today's hearing. My name is Diana Ayala, and I am the Deputy Speaker of the New York City Council and the Chair of the General Welfare Committee. Today, we are holding an oversight hearing on the Department of Social Services manipulation of monthly eligibility rate reporting. We will also be hearing two bills. The first, Intro 210 sponsored by Councilmember Hanif, would prohibit any city agency from imposing limits on the length of time an individual or family may remain in shelter or emergency congregate housing, provided such individual or family is eligible for temporary housing assistance under state law. The second, Intro 349 sponsored by Councilmember Nurse, would make clarifying edits to Local Law 34 of 2024 to indicate that required reports are to be submitted on a quarterly basis. In January of this year, the Department of Investigations issued a report detailing its findings after conducting an investigation into allegations of unlawful overnight stays at path intake centers in the summer of 2022 and improper manipulation of the publicly reported path eligibility rate from 2017 to mid-2022. Amongst its findings, DOI indicated that the Department of Homeless Services, under both Mayor Eric Adams' administration and former Mayor Bill de Blasio's administration, had unreported right-to-shelter violations, inadequate record-keeping, and a blatant manipulation of statistics. In addition to violations being unreported, the DOI found that the top homeless service officials artificially lowered a publicly-reported statistic, which ultimately painted the wrong picture of what shelter capacity needs are in New York City. This could have resulted in longer wait times for families to qualify for housing vouchers and move into permanent housing, further clogging up an overburdened shelter system. Councilmember Hanif will be speaking about her bill, Intro 349. I want to underscore that rather than issuing a shelter state limit for asylum seekers, the city should be finding ways to ensure that asylum seekers can live with dignity. This cruel policy is destabilizing to so many who are already struggling to navigate being here. I look forward to hearing from the administration and advocates today and gathering feedback on this oversight topic and on Intro 210. At this time, I'd like to acknowledge my colleagues who are here today, Councilmembers Gabang, Ose, Ang, Aviles, Rivera, and Stevens. And Councilmember Hanif. I would also like to thank the committee staff, who worked hard to prepare this hearing: Amenta Kilowan, Senior Counsel; David Romero, Counsel; Caroline Strauss, Legal Extern; Julia Harimis, Unit Head; Perina Ramon, Finance Analyst; Andrew Schole, Data Analyst; and finally, my staff, Elsie Encarnacion, Chief of Staff. I also want to take this time to express my gratitude to our Counsel, David Romero, who will be moving on from his time at the council. David has been an invaluable asset to this body. While we are sad to see him go, we wish him the best, maybe. Maybe. In his future endeavors, we will really, really miss him. I will now turn it over to our panel of impacted individuals, and I just really want to point out that I'm very disappointed that the administration is not here to hear from these individuals, because that is the whole point. When we allow these panels to go first is really to give an opportunity for the administration to hear how, you know, from the people that are impacted by our policies on, you know, the detrimental ways that these policies are impacting their lives. With that, I'll pass it over to counsel.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Amenta Kilowan, Senior Counsel to the Committee on General Welfare at the New York City Council. I'll be moderating today's hearing and calling panelists to testify. The first panel will be a public panel comprised of Salif and Babakar. And this panel will require French interpretation.
Salam aleikum rabbatullah. Yulindinui okusilekusituramaksantum. Malababakar. Deke Senegal. Nyo dukusi Amerik.
Okay, avant tout d'abord, je voulais me présenter. Je m'appelle Salif. Et je suis là en tant que immigré et qui est là pour décrire ce qui se passe dans les centres avec mon ami Babakar.
Let me introduce myself. My name is Salif. I'm here to talk about what's going on in centers with my friend sitting right next to me.
Le moment où nous sommes arrivés ici, nous étions dans des centres. Donc, nous sommes venus de Senegal. Nous avons eu une nuit de travail. Nous avons eu des problèmes. Nous avons eu des difficultés. Nous avons eu des difficultés. Nous avons eu des difficultés.
Okay, nous sommes là pour décrire ce qui se passe dans les centres. Et vu que on est là, les centres donc, 32 jours, pour que... comment vivre? Et pour nous, les 32 jours, c'est très peu. Et les 62 jours aussi, c'est pas quelque chose qui est possible. On doit s'améliorer beaucoup de choses: de quoi manger, de quoi vivre, les toilettes. Et tout ça, on voulait que vous nous ayez sur ça. Parce qu'on a fait une très longue voyage. Et pour cela, il faut, il faut nous aider. En tout cas, ce qui se passe dans les centres est assez brige. Il doit faire une maximum deux semaines pour trouver un centre. Il faut, il faut décrire cela.
We're going to need help in what's going on in the center. We've been there for 30 days now. So we're wondering, basically, what is going to be the next step forward? How is the committee going to help us, given our situation?
Nous avons eu des difficultés. 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 Nous avons eu des difficultés.
Bon, pour l'étant ce que mon ami Babakar vient d'expliquer, il va consentre beaucoup de choses sur les centres. Vu que la nourriture, c'est pas bon. Et ensemble, ça comporte pile de 100 ou 60 personnes pour deux toilettes. Voilà.
So what my friend is saying up until now is that the condition in center is not decent at all. There's only two bathrooms for up to... Combien de personnes?
80 ou 60.
So there's only two bathrooms for 80 to 100 people? So first, that is the first issue that his friend mentioned.
La nourriture, c'est que, c'est de la routine. Ça commence le matin, c'est celui qui commande le soir. On te donne de quoi amasser le matin, et c'est vraisemblable, c'est chaque jour, c'est répétitif.
So the food is actually the same every single day? Pretty much, what we eat in the morning is the same thing as we eat at night? It's just pretty much the same thing every single day?
En plus de cela, si tu termines, tu pars à Chambres-Breege pour inscrire à nouveau. Et tu peux faire là-bas une dizaine ou quinzaine de jours sans trouver un centre. Et dès que tu trouves un centre, on te donne seulement pour un mois. Et les un mois, ça expirait très vite. Tu fais encore là que pour une quinzaine de jours.
So this is interpreted. Any clarification, please?
Vous avez dit, monsieur, que quand vous vous inscrivez, vous n'êtes pas sûr d'avoir un centre? C'est ça que vous avez dit?
Si vous inscrivez dans les centres, si tu pars à Chambres-Breege pour trouver un centre, on te donne, tu pars pour faire là que pendant 15 ou 10 jours.
Quand vous trouvez un centre, c'est que pendant 15 jours après?
Non, si tu trouves un centre, c'est un mois, les 32 jours.
D'accord.
Après les 32 jours, si tu as terminé, tu pars pour inscrire à nouveau.
Okay, so what he's saying is that... Whenever you find a shelter that will give you... If you find a shelter, it's only for 30 days, and after those 30 days, you have to apply again. And when you find yourself in that situation, you're sure if you're going to be finding a shelter again after those 30 days?
On peut dire ça, c'est très difficile pour beaucoup de monde. C'est pas seulement à moi, ça se passe pour tout le monde. Et on est là aujourd'hui pour représenter tous les personnes qui n'ont pas pu venir, tous les immigrés, parce que, voilà, tout le monde passe comme ça, c'est comme ça la routine ici. On est là vraiment, on a besoin que ça, c'est quoi, on a besoin d'être pour ça.
So my friend and I are not just talking on our behalf. We're here talking on the behalf of all of the immigrants who couldn't make it today. We're not just talking about our condition. We're just trying to represent a lot of people in the same situation.
Okay, comme Babakar vient d'expliquer, il a dit que on a besoin d'être surtout au niveau des centres. Au niveau des centres, parce que, ce que je viens d'écrire, la nourriture, c'est pas bon. Et après ça, là, les dortoirs, là où on dort, c'est quelque chose de très difficile. Voilà, les lits, c'est très difficile. Il y en a beaucoup de monde qui sont là-bas, ils ont des problèmes de santé. Et pour se trouver là où se soigner aussi, c'est un big problème pour beaucoup de gens.
So we mentioned the situation about food. Food is not the only worry that we have. Also, beddings. And where we sleep is not decent at all. There are a lot of people who have conditions, who are sick. And they're not taken care of properly.
En tout cas, on vit là-bas des conditions que vous ne connaissez pas. Mais en tant qu'êtres immés, nous sommes là pour vous décrire ce qui se passe dans les centres.
We are here to talk about conditions that you don't know. But we are here as immigrants to talk about those conditions.
En plus de cela, voilà, on vous remercie d'avoir nous écouter. Et j'espère que vous ferez de votre mieux pour aider les gens qui sont dans les centres. Et essayez de trouver une solution pour les 30 ou 60 jours. Essayez de trouver une solution pour la nourriture. Essayez de trouver, parce que ce sont des êtres immés qui sont là-bas, qui ont des problèmes. Et autant de problèmes que vous le croyez. Et ils sont là, ils ont besoin que vous les soutiennent, que vous les aidez. Parce que il fait très froid à dort. Et 32 jours, on en sort que, voilà, il fait extrêmement froid. Voilà, on ne peut pas supporter cette froid à dort pendant 15 ou 22 jours.
First of all, thank you for listening to us and giving us an opportunity to speak. We hope that this hearing will be profitable for us and for all of the immigrants that are outside. It is very cold outside, and 30 days in a shelter is not enough. As I previously mentioned, after those 30 days, we find ourselves in the same situation again. So it's not just about food, it's about an overall. So thank you for listening to us, and we hope that in the coming days, a solution... The committee will be able to find a solution.
Okay, comme il vient d'exprimer encore, il a dit que dans les centres, ce qu'on m'a là-bas, c'est ce qui est coincé depuis un bout de moment. Beaucoup de temps, presque, je ne sais pas depuis quand. Il a dit que aussi, ça c'est pas bon pour la santé. Et voilà, on a besoin de solutions pour ça. Et il y a quelque chose que j'ai oublié de souligner. À propos de des centres, si tu n'as pas de centre, tu pars la nuit, certains souvent, dans les églises. Et de passer là-bas la nuit, c'est que tu as droit de dormir à partir de zéro heure. De zéro heure, et tu travais 6 heures du matin. Ça plu ou sanaise, tu dors.
So first of all, as I previously mentioned, the food is not decent at all. We are given food that has been frozen for a very long time. So the food is not decent, it's only frozen food every day. And also, I forgot about underlining something, is that when you don't find, after those 30 days, when you do not find a shelter, you have to sleep in a church. And you can only sleep in that church from midnight to 6:00 AM.
Et aussi, tu dors, comment vous disiez ça, au sol, sur le floor? Il y a pas de couverture, il y a rien, il y a pas de quoi amasser, il y a rien. Et ça, c'est comme ça, répétitif, chaque jour, chaque jour, c'est comme ça.
And whenever that happens, we only sleep on the floor. There are no blankets or anything like that. And it's like that every day.
Aussi, on vous remercie, et on vous dit que Dieu vous bénisse.
We thank you, and God bless you all.
I think we had some questions.
Attends, moi?
Yes, come. Good morning. Thank you, trans.
Good morning.
I'm Councilmember Diana Ayala. I would like to welcome you to New York City.
Merci, thank you.
I think that you will find a panel of individuals that welcome you to our city with open arms. I would like to understand a little bit more about your experiences in the shelter setting here in New York. So I want to ask a couple of questions. I think the first thing I would, I think is important to understand is, how long have you been here in New York City?
I was here since five months.
Pardon?
I was here since five months.
Five months.
Five months?
Five months.
Okay.
Six months for him, five months for him.
And in that time, how many shelters have you stayed in?
I've been in three to four centers, three to four shelters for now. Three.
Three.
Three for him, four for him.
And is that a result, as a result of the 30-day rule?
It is.
Okay. When, while in shelter, have you had the opportunity to talk to a social worker or a caseworker to plan out your, to plan out a long-term plan for exit of shelter?
Comment faire l'asile, comment faire les papiers, comment ça se passe après les 30 jours? Il y a quelqu'un qui vous a aidés pour les démarches à suivre?
C'est pas tous les centres, bon, à part moi. Là où j'ai passé, c'est pas tous les centres qui ont fait ça pour moi. Il y a une fois, Whole Street a essayé d'aider avec l'asile. Mais bon, j'ai pas fait l'asile avec eux. Et il y a une fois, Whole Street m'a dit ça, mais ça serait là, seulement que ça. La première fois, c'était à Whole Street. Et I stopped, ils ont aidé, ils ont essayé, ils n'ont pas aidé. Mais ils t'ont donné seulement une adresse, entre disant par là-bas, tu vas faire ceci et ceci. Non, l'adresse, c'est pas un centre. Lorsque vous avez l'adresse, c'est dans un centre, à Whole Street. Et I stopped, ils m'ont donné une adresse pour ça. Mais à part ça, il nous faut rien.
I was in an office somewhere in Wall Street, and they gave me an address that would help him. Nothing.
So he didn't speak to, they haven't spoken to anyone?
I'm on need clarification, my bad.
Un centre, c'était quoi?
Non, c'est pas un centre, c'est à... 520, 520, 45. Okay. Il a dit que lui, on l'a donné une adresse lorsqu'il est parti là-bas. Cette adresse l'a orientée pour faire l'asile. Cette adresse même qu'il a aidé à faire.
From what I understand, they, someone gave him a certain address. At that address, it was some type of an office. And at that office, he has some type of procedure, and he gave a lot of documents in order to explain his case and all that.
And that happened one time?
They'd only happen once.
Okay, I'm asking this question because the city has argued that there is extensive case management that happens during the transition of folks. And so it's important for us to understand whether or not that is happening and to what extent it is happening. Because the idea is that during that process, folks would be, you know, there would be some sort of exit plan, strategy. So if somebody had a family member someplace else, then we will have a better understanding of that. If they're not meeting with someone regularly, then that is not, in fact, what's happening. And that's what I'm trying to ascertain.
Okay.
Bon, à part les centres, moi, je dis que pour moi, personnellement, les centres nous ont, non pas aidés personne. Moi, c'est que je comprends.
Just for me, shelters have not been helpful up until now. So he said, in the shelters per se, we don't get much help. We get a lot of help from outsiders, basically. People who just come into the shelters, bring us food, help us with any type of procedure that we need. These are the people that help us, people that just, outsiders.
So how are they informed that they have to leave?
I don't know if I can mention their name or their organization, they haven't given me the rights. But those people are really the ones who are helping us in every situation possible. So apart from them, he was just underlining that apart from them, he has not seen proper help. He said, these people that he just previously mentioned are the only ones who bring him clothes, who bring them food, who help him with any type of procedure, they are the only ones.
Okay, so once they exit the shelter, how long does it take before they're able to access another bed? So they're standing in line for how many days, how many hours?
Okay, hold. 4 jours, comment ça? Tu vois, ça, c'est son numéro.
About four days, it takes about four days. Whenever we leave one shelter, it takes us about four days to find another shelter.
Okay.
It actually depends on people and situations. Some people find another shelter very quickly. Some people, it takes up, they find, it takes them up to 10 days to find a shelter.
10 days?
10 days, some people.
Ou plus.
Or sometimes more.
So where do folks stay from the time that they're exiting a shelter to the time that they have access to a new bed?
Okay. Au moment où tu n'as pas de centre, ce qu'il a expliqué, et on a vécu ça nous tous, tu dois, souvent, tu passes dans des lieux publics, ou souvent, tu passes dans les restaurants pour acheter un peu de café pour pouvoir rester là-bas longtemps. Sinon, eux, ils te donnent une adresse que tu dois aller dormir. Mais c'est seulement entre 20 heures, comme vous le disiez, 8 heures PM jusqu'à 6 heures AM. Et tu sors, à partir de 6 heures AM, voilà, tu es dans des différents locaux et dans les différents lieux, pour gagner du temps jusqu'à la nuit encore, tu serres là où dormir.
So from the moment we leave the shelter to the moment we find another shelter, we just sleep in different locations that were, that are given to us, that are recommended to us by people who are basically running the shelters. And but in those locations, you can only sleep there and be there from 8:00 PM to...
6 heures du matin, vous avez dit?
6 heures du matin.
8:00 PM to 6:00 AM, that's it. And then after 6:00 AM, you have to get out of those locations, wherever they are. Wait until 8:00 PM again.
So they're just walking around?
Some people are just collecting bottles to sell them back, to make some money, and also to kill time. Me, a few times, I had English courses.
Okay. Have there been times where you've been forced to sleep out on the street?
It did happen, yes. And sometimes you just, you sleep somewhere, wherever you can. Basically, it could be in a train, it could be anywhere. Or you just spend the night collecting bottles, you know, just to find something to do during the night until morning.
Have there been times that they've gone without food or water throughout the day?
Yeah, we're very used to that, it happens very often. But many times, we find people who are just very kind-hearted and just help you, give you food and help you.
Well, thank God for those people. Councilmember Hanif?
I want to echo the sentiments of Chair Diana Ayala. Assalamualaikum.
Waalaikumsalam.
Thank you for choosing New York City. I'm sorry that our mayor has implemented this cruel 30-day rule. The legislation we're hearing today was introduced by me. It would prohibit this administration from enacting shelter caps.
Yep. Merci.
Thank you.
However, he has already implemented a shelter cap, the 30-day rule for single adults such as yourself, and then the 60-day rule for families with children.
Mais en attendant, cette règle des 30 jours est en place pour les adultes et elle est aussi en place pour de 60 jours pour, pour des gens qui ont des enfants. Entre-temps, c'est vrai que sont, sont en place.
And your testimony shows us that this directive is a failure.
Et votre témoignage nous montre que cette règle est une, est un échec.
We want everyone housed.
Pardon?
We want everyone housed.
Nous voulons que tout le monde est un, est une maison, est un foyer.
Merci, que Dieu le veut, que Dieu le fait.
Hmm?
Que Dieu le fait. Il a dit que vous, eux, ils voulaient que tout le monde trouve...
Elle veut que tout le monde puisse avoir une maison.
On a dit que ça concerne nous aussi.
Oh, thank you, we want the same.
Where are you staying right now?
Où est-ce que vous restez maintenant?
Euh, dans les centres jusqu'à présent.
I'm still in, in the shelter.
But... Mais lui, il n'a pas encore trouvé de centre.
Euh, il dit, demain, il me fallait une...
A Randal.
A Randal, il a demandé quand il s'est senti.
Okay. Lui, il a dit que avant-hier, on l'a arrêté.
On l'a?
On l'a arrêté pour une nouvelle centre.
A Randal.
A Randal, il est là.
Hier, on lui a donné un nouveau centre?
Oui, mais depuis qu'il est parti là-bas, on l'a dit que tu n'es pas dans le centre, tu ne peux pas rentrer.
Donc il a été au centre, mais on l'a dit, tu peux pas rentrer?
Oui, à Randal.
Lui, il a fini ses 30 jours.
Okay.
Lorsque ses 30 jours est fini, il est parti à Saint-Bridget pour inscrire à nouveau.
Uh huh.
Il a fait cinq ou six jours en ligne pour trouver un centre. Lorsqu'on a donné l'adresse, on reprend l'adresse.
Euh, Randal.
Ah non, pas pis. Lorsqu'on l'a donné l'adresse...
You don't have to give me the address. Yeah, you don't have to give me the address.
We don't want the address or the name.
So that's about the gentleman who was sitting right next to me.
Is it in Manhattan?
No, ils ont pas besoin de l'adresse, ils n'ont pas besoin d'adresse. Um, he stayed in the shelter for about 30 days.
So you started a new cycle of 30 days?
Well, he was in a shelter for 30 days and then they gave him an address, a recommendation for another shelter. It took him five days, four to five days to find that other shelter.
Find that other shelter?
Yeah, and once he got to that other shelter, they told him that, ils ont dit qu'il avait pas de place?
Oui, ils m'ont dit que voilà, là-bas, il n'est pas de place. Maintenant, il est obligé de chercher encore un autre.
And about that other shelter that he was supposed to be welcome, and they said to him over there that didn't have any space for him. So basically, he's back to finding another shelter again, as of now.
So the gentleman in the middle is back to finding, he's, he's right now in, in a precarious situation looking for...
Yes, he's looking for another shelter, at the moment, yes.
As we speak about this, understood. And then, have you both applied for asylum?
Est-ce que vous avez tous les deux appliqué pour l'asile?
Moi, j'ai appliqué l'asile, mais lui aussi, il a appliqué l'asile.
Yes, we both applied.
And was that a result of the city ask, saying that this was an available service at the shelter?
Est-ce que vous avez appliqué pour l'asile parce qu'au centre, on vous a dit que c'était possible? Pourquoi vous avez appliqué, appliqué pour l'asile?
Pourquoi on a appliqué l'asile? On a appliqué l'asile parce que c'est notre droit d'appeler l'asile. On est là pour demander de l'asile, mais on l'a pas fait dans les centres. Voilà.
So we just apply for asylum because we know we have the rights to, but we haven't done that in the shelters.
Okay, and then have you had access to healthcare?
Est-ce que vous avez eu accès à des assurances maladies ou des soins?
Si, on a des assurances maladies.
Yes, we have, we have access to healthcare, we have health insurance.
Okay, great. And then what other services have you had access to?
Euh, à part l'assurance maladie, quel autre service, quelle autre chose on vous avait, on vous a donné?
Like the ID NYC?
Seulement ces deux soldats. Euh, assurance maladie, ID New York, ID New York, on l'a fait à 685.
Le deuxième, c'était quoi?
Euh, ID.
So basically, just ID and health insurance, those two things.
Thank you, thank you, Chair.
Councilmember Stevens, followed by Councilmember Olsay.
I just want to start off by saying thank you for being here and sharing your journey with us.
Des marais pour vous dire merci et de partager votre journée.
Um, we know that it's not easy and sometimes it, being in this room, sometimes it's scary. But we just want to be here to be supportive and making sure that you do get the help that you need.
On sait que c'est pas facile d'être là et on apprécie votre, le fait que vous soyez venu pour nous parler et on va essayer de faire en sorte de vous aider pour que vous y ayez l'aide dont vous avez besoin.
D'accord, plaisir de partager.
So I have just a few questions, and, and one of them is around language access. I see even here, we're having like a three translation situation happening. How has language access been when you are at these shelters?
Just to make sure, what do you mean by language access?
Have they been able to get, have, is there translators there? Is the paperwork in their native language? What has that been like in that experience?
Dans les centres, qui traduit pour vous? Quand vous avez besoin de communiquer que c'est pas la même langue, vous avez des traducteurs là-bas qui traduisent la langue, qui vous expliquent les choses?
Oui, il y a des, il y a des traducteurs.
En téléphone.
Hmm?
C'est en téléphone.
Mais est-ce que quand vous avez besoin de traduire du langage, vous avez des traducteurs sur place qui vous aident?
Il y a certains centres, il y a des gens qui travaillent là-bas, ce sont des multilangues.
Donc ils traduisent pour vous?
Ils traduisent, souvent, il y a d'autres centres, ils appliquent seulement l'appel.
So he said, most time when we want to apply for something, we just apply over the phone. But in some shelters, we have someone who translates and interprets for us.
Okay, good. Um, so there, I heard a couple of times, they kept saying they have to find another shelter. Are they not, when the 30 days are up, are they not given another referral? Do they, are they going back to the, the original heart, the intake center, I'm sorry? I'm just trying to figure out what that means when they're saying they're, they are finding their own shelters. Are they then like getting support from other people? Because I know especially, it's been a lot of folks helping each other, saying, hey, this one might be open. But I'm just trying to get a little clarity about what do they mean by they're finding another shelter to go to?
Donc ce qu'elle veut, elle veut savoir un détail très simple, expliquer à la dame. Une fois que vous avez fini les 30 jours et vous avez, vous devez partir d'un centre, comment est-ce que vous trouvez l'autre centre? C'est quelqu'un qui vous le recommande? Vous le trouvez de vous-même, vous mettez en, vous attendez en, devant le centre jusqu'à qu'on vous accepte? Pour retrouver un autre centre?
Hmm. Vous diriez que les 30 jours, c'est ça. N'angerez pas à même dans les centres, les faires, pas non, n'angerez pas, ou la, 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 qui centre, bobo, bobo, de la, ou la, n'angerez pas à même dans les centres?
Dangue, dangue, c'est 30 jours, il dirait. C'est le, 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 la, la dame, 185.
185?
185, 185, la dame, le, le, AS, le, ça, ID, ben, le numéro. Le numéro, ben, la, 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 j'aurais, ben, quatre mètres. La dame, la femme, qui, 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 quoi?
Demande, femme, qui a d'adresse?
Église, bobo. Ou, à, tu es, bobo, la, la, même chose, vous, c'est numéro, j'ai tout. La dame, même chose, non, vous, c'est numéro, du, du, de, orienté, qui, ben, le centre.
Okay, comme il vient de l'expliquer, il a dit, si, si, tes 30 jours sont terminés, tu dois aller à 185, Saint-Bridget.
185?
5, 185, c'est une adresse qu'on te recommande, tu allais. Si tu parles là-bas, tu vas faire là que...
D'accord.
Voilà, on te donne premier jour, euh, une numéro, que tu vas suivre cette numéro-là. Ça peut être entre 20 000 ou 30 000, sans dépasser. Peut-être, il y aura 1000 personnes devant toi et tu vas attendre jusqu'à tous ces personnes-là, on les trouve, des centres, et tu...
So when we're done with the 30 days, there's an office, it's called 180 something, I couldn't understand the whole address, but there's an office where you go to, and in that office, they give you a number. And once you have that number, you just basically wait in line for a very long time in order to just be dealt with, so you can talk to someone. And then from there, you find another shelter. But that period where you wait at that address is, can be quite long.
Do we know like how long, a couple of hours?
Quand vous allez à l'adresse des 180 qui vous donne le numéro, combien de temps vous attendez avant de trouver un, un...
Un autre centre?
Oui, quand vous avez dit, vous allez à l'adresse des 180, ils vous donnent un numéro. Combien de temps vous attendez, vous devez attendre là-bas avant de pouvoir, qu'on vous donne l'adresse d'un autre centre?
Bon, quatre jours.
Four days, about four days.
So wait...
Ça, ce sont les gens qui ont de la chance, qui ont quatre jours, mais d'autres paraissent dix à quinze heures pour trouver une autre centre.
Donc tous les jours, vous êtes là-bas, tous les jours, vous attendez?
Qui parle là-bas, et tu sais, qu'on t'oriente, mais encore, tu reviens, encore, tu reviens jusqu'à, voilà.
He says, at that address, some people, sometimes it takes four days, and actually, it's a short period of time, it can take way longer than that, sometimes it's up to 10 days. So basically, every single day, they go to that address and they just wait.
So also, they'll go and then they'll leave? And is this at Saint-Bridget's?
Pardon?
Is this at Saint-Bridget's?
Mm-hmm. C'est à Saint-Bridget.
Yep, it is.
Okay. Um, and just my last question. And even when they're in the shelters, I know one of them said that sometimes they'll take English classes, or language classes. Are there other services like work readiness, job programs, and other language classes that are being offered while they're there so that they can start being assimilated?
When you're in the centre, à part les cours, vous avez, vous avez parlé plutôt, tu vas parler des cours d'anglais. Est-ce qu'il y a d'autres services, d'autres choses qui sont, vous sont proposés?
Non.
Pour vous aider, que ce soit, à part les cours d'anglais?
Non, même les cours anglais, c'est toi-même qui fait effort. C'est toi-même qui va apprendre l'anglais parce que ici, c'est États-Unis, tu dois parler l'anglais ou espagnol. C'est toi-même qui force, toi-même, pour aller certaines des cours, là où on apprend les cours d'anglais gratuits?
Uh, no, there are no, we're not offered anything like that. We just learn the language, we learn English on our own, because we know that if we don't, we're not going to be able to communicate with people. But we're not offered those types of services.
Also, they're learning, they're teaching each other English?
Basically, pretty much, yes.
And so there's no other like services being offered?
Nobody's teaching them anything or giving classes or anything like that. He just said like, we learn on, we just learn on our own, so.
Thank you.
Bon motard, mes amis, excusez-moi pour mon français. Merci beaucoup pour votre témoignage. Qu'est-ce que les services technologiques que vous avez dans les refuges comme des téléphones, de wifi, des metro cards?
J'ai pas bien compris.
Donc, quand vous êtes dans les centres, à quoi vous avez accès? Vous avez le wifi, vous avez internet, vous avez des cartes de métro?
Oh, très bonne question. Lorsqu'on est dans les centres, il y en a wifi dans les centres, ça?
We have wifi in shelters.
Mais à part ça, il y a rien d'autre.
But apart from that, there are not, there's nothing?
Le métro card, quand on, si il y a une rendez-vous, si il y a une rendez-vous, le mail est venu sur leur adresse. On te donne une métro carte qui a tout trip, aller-retour, à part ça, non.
And concerning the metro cards, the only metro cards that, that are given to us are metro cards that are just, you can use only once. They are not metro cards that you can use all the time.
And those are provided by the city?
Ces métro cards, ils voulaient, à quel moment exactement? Pour quelle raison?
La raison pour laquelle tu as une rendez-vous, pour exemple, parce que tu as une rendez-vous avec l'immigration.
Et qui vous donne ces cartes de métro exactement? Le centre?
Le centre.
So the shelter provides those metro cards only if we have like an appointment. They will give us that, that metro card only for a few hours, not like a limited pass, basically, is what he's saying.
Merci.
Diane?
Derrière.
Councilmember Brewer?
Je suis, je suis heureuse que vous êtes ici parce que je parle petit, beaucoup de français, mais jamais de personne te parle avec, c'est très bien que vous êtes ici, mais je parle en anglais. Um, so my question is, when you first came, it's the same issue. Was there anybody in the first shelter who said English classes, work, legal, social work, casework, anything like that?
Quand vous étiez, quand vous étiez dans le premier centre, est-ce que quelqu'un vous a dit que vous, va vous donner des cours d'anglais ou quoi que ce soit d'autre?
Donner des cours anglais ou dans le centre?
Oui.
Dans les centres, il y a pas de cours anglais. Je ne sais pas, une centre, bon, à part moi, je ne sais pas où, je ne sais pas encore. Est-ce que il y en a des centres qui, qui apprennent les gens l'anglais? Il y en a pas, rien. Dans les centres, il y a, c'est soldat, c'est... Mauvais manger, mal dormi, beaucoup de dérangement et mauvaise toilette.
He said, I don't know what shelters provide, offers English classes, but in the shelters that I've been to, the only thing that I've experienced, or the thing that I've previous, previously mentioned, which is bad food, bad beddings, and, and except for the wifi and the, and the metro cars, pretty much nothing else.
And the healthcare, did that come when you first came in, in terms of getting either Medicaid or NYC Health? How did the healthcare come about?
Comment est-ce que vous avez réussi à avoir l'assurance maladie?
Euh, l'assurance maladie, moi, à part moi, je les reces, c'est eux qui ont orienté parce qu'ils ont dit que si tu es là, tu dois faire médical. Et il y avait des gens qui sont venus avant moi, c'est eux qui m'ont montré l'hôpital où faire. Mais je ne sais pas comment ces gens-là, ils vont trouver, euh, comment faire.
C'est des gens de l'extérieur qui sont venus dans le centre?
C'est des gens qui sont à l'intérieur du centre, des immigrés comme moi, qui sont venus auparavant, avant moi. C'est eux qui m'ont orienté pour aller faire médical.
I managed to get, I received healthcare, I was recommended by other immigrants who had been in that shelter, who arrived in that shelter before I did. So they, they explained to me the procedure in order to have shelter. So basically, he got it from, he got the recommendation from other immigrants who were, who had been in that, that same shelter for longer.
Et maintenant, ça c'est devenu comme une, une famille actuellement. Si quelqu'un vient de nouveau, nous aussi, on va lui indiquer comment faire, on va lui dire, va faire ça, va faire ça, va faire ça.
So basically, we became sort of a, a family. When we have new, new people coming in, we tell them the same thing, we explain to them how to get healthcare and how to get whatever we can get, we help each other.
Merci beaucoup alors.
Derrière.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Bon? C'est bon? D'accord?
Yeah, we're done with this part.
Oh, c'est bon, c'est bon.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Councilmember Hanif, would you like to speak to your bill?
Yes. Good morning, thank you Deputy Speaker Ayala for including Intro 210 on today's hearing agenda. This bill would prohibit the administration from implementing caps on shelter stays for all New Yorkers experiencing homelessness, including asylum seekers. The implementation of the mayor's 30 and 60-day rules has been nothing short of a human rights catastrophe. I'm proud to be advancing legislation that would put an end to these cruel and counterproductive policies alongside 12 of my colleagues in the council, the public advocate and the comptroller. The mayor brags that shelter evictions have reduced the number of people in the city's care, ignoring the obvious question, where are the people who are forced out of the shelter system ending up? Absent any comprehensive data from the administration, let's try our best to answer. Many are in line outside Saint-Bridget in the East Village, where they wait every day in the cold for weeks on end, hoping a bed placement opens up. Of these folks, a percentage are spending their nights in city-run bare bones waiting rooms that lack even basic cots. But ultimately, many, if not most of them, are sleeping in the subways or the streets, an outcome that benefits nobody. Alternatively, some are resorting to dangerous informal congregate living situations like the one just discovered in a storefront in Queens. Those who are unwilling to endure the suffering the city is putting them through are being re-ticketed by emergency management to other cities without any coordination with their local governments. This effectively repeats the same dynamic that occurs when Texas Governor Greg Abbott buses people to Port Authority with that warning, which Mayor Adams has been decrying for the last year and a half. Families with children are being given new shelter assignments but are destabilized by being shuffled around. Students who have built a sense of community in their schools are being pulled out of their classrooms. Progress that their parents have made on asylum, TPS, or work authorization applications, is stymied by the operational complications of an address change. It's tempting to say that this policy is pointless, but that would be incorrect, as the cruelty itself is the point. A growing chorus of New Yorkers is seeing the harm created by these shelter evictions and calling on them to end. It was an honor to be joined earlier this morning by a broad-based coalition of faith leaders and advocates, including the Interfaith Center, J. Fredj, New York Jewish Agenda, Tiardof, the synagogue Coalition on the Refugee and Immigration Crisis, Malika, the Working Families Party, New York Immigration Coalition, Vocal New York, Women in Need, Safety Net Project, and Make the Road New York. I look forward to hearing their testimony later on. I urge my colleagues to sponsor Intro 210 and to swiftly bring it up for a vote. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. I'm turning it, yeah, we can turn it over to council.
We want to now call up members of the administration, if they're here. Would you both please raise your right hand? To affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth before this committee and to respond honestly to councilmember questions, Commissioner Molly Park?
I do.
Thank you. Interim Director Molly Schaefer?
I do.
Thank you. You may begin when ready.
Good morning. I want to thank the City Council's Committee on General Welfare for organizing today's hearing. My name is Molly Wasso Park, and I serve as the Commissioner of the Department of Social Services, which is made up of the Human Resources Administration, or HRA, and the Department of Homeless Services, DHS. I'm joined by Molly Schaefer, Director of the New York City Office of Asylum Seeker Operations. DHS is the nation's largest and most comprehensive municipal shelter system for people and families experiencing homelessness. Through our shelters and programs, both those directly operated and those operated in partnership with not-for-profit partners, we support people through profoundly challenging moments in their lives. Our work to prevent homelessness and our work to provide shelter to families and adults makes a real difference in the lives of the people we proudly serve. It is our collective mission to provide support and opportunities for those experiencing homelessness to ultimately transition to safe and healthy permanent housing. I open with this focus on mission to underscore what drives me, Mayor Adams, and this entire administration daily. Our focus on getting stuff done to support the lives of New York's most vulnerable communities is our ethos, our passion, our life's dedication. And before you today to discuss the findings of the DOI report released in January of this year. As the report concluded, the manipulation of the PATH eligibility rate was at the direction of the leadership of the past administration. Looking forward rather than back, I am committed to being as transparent as possible and will work with the council and other oversight bodies to maintain that standard. I am equally determined to support the work of this great agency and the teams that work around the clock to support New Yorkers who have fallen on hard times and need our help. I want to state clearly that this manipulation of data has not and will not happen under this administration, and I have the utmost confidence in Administrator Carter and the entire team at DHS. Jocelyn Carter has dedicated her life and career to assisting the most vulnerable people in this city. Her commitment to the mission of DHS has positively impacted the lives of thousands of New Yorkers, and this city is a better place under her leadership. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today.
Before we start, I just wanted to take a moment to say that in the midst of this humanitarian crisis, it's important to be mindful of the individual people who have traveled to the United States to start new lives. Thank you to the brave people who spoke today and to the council members who invited them. We're about to discuss the city's response to this unprecedented crisis and how we have managed and are managing it, which often means talking about things at a very high level. But when we talk about the 170,000 people that have come through the city's care or the 64,000 that are currently in our care, this administration never loses sight of the individual people and the lives impacted. Thank you again for sharing your stories. Now I will start. Good morning, Chair Ayala, and members of the General Welfare Committee. I am Molly Schaefer, interim director of the New York City Mayor's Office of Asylum Seeker Operations, Owasso. I'm happy to be here before you today to discuss the city's ongoing efforts to support migrants arriving in New York City and the negative impact proposed Intro 210 would have on the city's ability to effectively manage the asylum seeker response. Since April 2022, New York City has led the nation's response to the migrant emergency, providing immediate shelter, food, legal support, and other essential services to over 179,000 people. Our city has managed this emergency with compassion and decency. We have relied on experienced agency leaders and hundreds of public servants who have been supporting this effort while also managing their day jobs. Let's be clear, there was no playbook on how to respond to a global humanitarian crisis. But what we did and continue to do is what New Yorkers do best in times of crisis. We step up to help each other and we find creative solutions. For nearly two years, that is what New Yorkers and people all over the country and world have seen: New York City taking action. Using the limited resources and tools available to us, we have opened 216 emergency sites and are currently serving over 64,000 people. And importantly, no families with children have had to sleep on the street. I think that statement is sometimes overlooked. As Commissioner Park knows all too well, it normally takes years to open a traditional shelter. We stood up over 200 emergency sites and fully staffed and operationalized them in less than two years. That is a significant feat. One of these sites is our Arrival Center, something I'm immensely proud of, which operates 24 hours, seven days per week, with comprehensive onsite services. Many partners from all levels of government and around the world have traveled to observe our operations with the intention of adopting our best practices. We are proud of the work we have accomplished, and we recognize that more needs to be done. A national humanitarian crisis deserves a whole-of-government approach that addresses needs municipal governments alone cannot meet. We hear from people in our care every day. They want to work. We've been steadfast in our advocacy on work authorization to the federal government, and due to this advocacy, temporary protected status was extended to Venezuelans. While we appreciate the support we have received from our state and federal partners thus far, the work is not done. We need additional resources to keep pace with the daily influx of new arrivals into city emergency sites. New York City has stepped up to support individuals and families arriving from the border, and we know more can be achieved. We've seen inspiring examples of our core values: New Yorkers opening their hearts, donating bookbags, clothing, and food to welcome our newest neighbors. New York City's future will continue to be built on our collective responsibility to help each other, regardless of immigration status. After the expiration of Title 42 in May 2023, the city had to respond to the biggest surge of new arrivals into the city's care since the beginning of the current crisis, which hit a peak of 4,300 arrivals over a one-week period. Given this historic influx and the need to immediately bring on capacity, we pursued additional models to bolster our response, including establishing emergency respite sites and launching our Upstate Hotel program at about a dozen sites. Despite around-the-clock efforts to increase our sheltering capacity, it became clear that a pipeline of emergency sites was only one part of the equation. At the same time, cities like Denver and Chicago were stretched beyond capacity and implemented time limits on the length of stay at their shelters. Other cities like San Diego and El Paso capped their accommodations and did not open any new sites to accommodate the influx. In July, we established a 60-day time limit on shelter stays for single adults and adult families. This was a hard decision based on careful consideration at the individual and policy level. In September, this time limit for adults was reduced to 30 days. Faced with an increasing number of new arrivals, severe capacity constraints, and an understanding that the cavalry from the federal government was not coming, we needed to continue to prioritize beds for families with children. In January, we began to implement the 60-day policy for families with children. As someone who's been at the front lines of welcoming and supporting new arrivals since April 2022, this was not a decision made lightly. We paired these time limits with case management to support families in the development of their plans for how to adapt and chart a course for their future. Case management teams engage with clients to identify the barriers preventing them from leaving shelter and then assist with those goals. Shelter time limits, paired with case management, are policies designed to help more households achieve self-sufficiency, find stable housing arrangements, and leave the shelter system. The shelter notices also allow us to accommodate new arrivals as people discharge. Currently, about 24% of single adults and adult families return seeking another placement, and 50% of families with children return and reapply. These policies are working. More people are taking that next step on their journey and moving out of shelter. Thoughtful planning, coordination, and engagement has gone into the implementation of these policies, particularly with our colleagues at New York City Public Schools. As we've publicly stated, our goal is to minimize disruption to children's education, and we remain focused on this goal. I want to thank the New York City Public Schools for their unwavering commitment to serving the nearly 36,000 students in temporary housing enrolled in our schools. The number of people in the city's emergency sites has steadily decreased from over 68,000 to under 65,000 in recent weeks, an indication that the city's intensive case management, legal services, and re-ticketing initiatives are working. Our team works diligently every day to improve our operations and to support our clients working toward their American dream. I will now turn to Intro 210 to share the administration's position on this bill. To date, over 179,000 people have received assistance at the city's emergency sites, and we have centered our work with compassion, care, and respect. We need this tool to carefully manage services because we don't control the numbers of new people arriving into this city. Without this tool, we can't manage it all. We are at the whims of southern cities, governors, and border politics. This intervention is a common sense practice employed across the country by cities like Denver and Chicago. We've taken this step, the support, a step further by pairing time limits with case management. People want to work. They do not want to live or raise their families in emergency shelters in perpetuity. This is evident in the data I shared. About 24% of single adults and adult families and about 50% of families with children return seeking another placement. Individuals and families are moving on from what was intended to be a temporary, emergency-based accommodation. This bill would restrict the city's ability to fund the work we are doing to identify their needs and support them. We strongly encourage the council to work with us in service of the people in our care, and this bill does not achieve that. As stated, we will continue to do all that we can to serve new arrivals in our care. For nearly two years and with no end in sight, the city continues leading the response to a national emergency. Our limited levers and tools should not be hindered by bills that will disrupt the good work we are doing, the work that has been acknowledged by leaders around the nation at the state and federal level and around the world. We look forward to continuing to work with the council, and I welcome an opportunity for you to join me for a visit at one of our shelter sites, the Asylum Application Help Center or Arrival Center, to see our operations up close. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today, and I'm happy to answer any of your questions.
I just need a moment to compose myself. Before I, I want to just recognize that we've also been joined by councilmember Brewer, Russler, and Banks. You know, oftentimes when I'm sitting on this side of the desk, I try to be really mindful that I've also been on that side. And I work really hard to be fair with folks that come before us because I know that we're all doing a job, and we're trying to do that job to the best of our ability. And so I don't want to shoot the messenger, if you will. However, I think that today I'm going to give myself permission to shoot the messenger. And that is because there is absolutely no compassion, care, or respect in throwing people out on the street that have no place to go. And the idea that this is a policy that we should be supportive of is insane. That action alone has tainted the good work that has been done. And I recognize that a lot of good work has been done in a very difficult, unprecedented situation. I've often said that publicly. I don't know how you have managed to be able to absorb and place and identify the number of sightings. It's a very difficult position that you have been put in. That is not disputable. But this policy is inhumane and it's dangerous. And it's only a matter of time before somebody gets hurt. We saw in the news in the last two days just one situation, which I'm sure is likely the beginning of a longer conversation on more sightings that we'll hear about, where migrants are huddled in spaces that are not suitable for housing, where a fire could break out and people could get seriously hurt. We've seen people sleeping out on the streets. That is not compassionate or respectful. And it's not care. And so I refuse to lend credibility to that statement because the devil is in the detail. Even when we're housing folks, and I do visit, and I have, I'll speak about, you know, Ward's Island. I have a heart at Ward's Island. The city thought it was a good idea to put 3,000 people on top of each other. I didn't think that was a great idea. And the result of this is that you have 3,000 people that have nowhere to go, nothing to do, because they don't have working papers. They can't work. They're not being connected to resources, even within the local community that they're being housed in. And so if they go outside, it's problematic. If they stay inside, it's problematic. And anybody in this room, you know, I think would agree that even within your own household, when there are too many people after a while, you know, people are quarreling and getting on each other's nerves. And so we're seeing that, to the point that I had a young migrant, 24 years old, murdered at Rando's Island. Now, I'm not saying that, you know, everybody that comes in is a saint and that problems will not arise. I didn't hear that coming. I didn't hear anybody make a big deal out of that in the administration. And I still haven't seen a single change in that shelter to ensure that it doesn't happen again. In fact, two weeks later, somebody else was slashed. There's inhumanity in that. The fact that people are eating food that is frozen, expired, moldy, or the same day in and day out, day in and day out, is not respect, compassion, or care. And I think that it's important that you hear that, and I get it. You're doing a job. But I need to do mine, and I need to be honest, and I need to be true to who I am, not only as a legislator, but as a human being. And shame on you for not coming into this room and standing outside while those gentlemen shared their experiences. Because that is the experience that you should be wanting to hear about so that you can make the necessary changes to ensure that the unnecessary struggles that we're putting them through are being addressed. And if you don't speak to the impacted community, there's absolutely no way that you're going to be able to make those changes in the most efficient and effective way. I'm sure that there will be questions. I have no questions, you know, to be honest, on this. I will let, you know, councilmember Hanif address that. But we're also here to really speak on a very serious issue, on findings on the DOI investigation that concluded that there had been some manipulation of data in regards to the eligibility of folks at the PATH Center. And so I will ask a few questions on that, and then I will defer to my colleagues. But actually, you know what? I want to just, very quickly, I'm going to let Carolina Rivera ask a question because I know that she has to leave.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair, and for your opening words, which I agree with wholeheartedly. It's been very, if you were here for those first few minutes in hearing the testimony, I encourage you to just go back and watch it, please. It was incredibly moving, and they have a very, very simple task, which is they'd like to start their life. So my district is home to the only re-ticketing center in New York City, St. Brigid's, which New York Magazine called "the longest line in New York." This site is the center of the chaos caused by the mayor's 30- to 60-day shelter limit rule. Individuals seeking asylum don't know where they're going to sleep, and they have had to deal with freezing, cold, and rain. And as was mentioned by the panel before this one, whether it's four days, 10 days, 15, you can hear these stories over and over again. And while people are looking or waiting for a cot, a bed, somewhere, they are either sleeping on the floor in some sort of facility or they're sleeping in the street or on the subway. So I have a few questions related to this. I'm going to ask them all at once for time. And as my mother would say, it's okay to take out a pen and write them down. How many people have been asked to leave stable shelter placement due to this rule? How many people have reapplied? How many of those people have actually been placed in a bed? What is the current waitlist for a bed? How many individuals do you estimate are sleeping on the street? How many individuals do you estimate are sleeping on the street or in the subways? Wouldn't it be safer to have people sleeping in shelters rather than crammed in commercial basements? And do you track how many people have been replaced in a bed and then have cycled through reapplication again? Thank you.
So I'm going to take those one at a time. I think just high level, as you all know, we have served more than one hundred and seventy-eight thousand asylum seekers. And at this point, we have given fifty-five thousand two hundred notices to single adults and adult families. Twenty-four percent are currently in our shelter system, so they have reapplied and they are currently in our shelter system. We have said many times, we are out of space. We allow people to, when they're reapplying, they come to St. Brigid's and they are given the opportunity to join the waitlist. And at that point, we do everything we can to get them on the next available bed. I'll turn it over to my colleague for anything on street homelessness.
Thank you. So as you know, Department of Homeless Services does twenty-four-seven outreach to clients experiencing unsheltered homelessness. This is separate and apart from the asylum seeker crisis. It's something we've done for many years and have increased. In the Adams Administration, we agree that we absolutely do not want people on the street. Our outreach workers, I our annual count of people experiencing homelessness happened, the HOPE Count, which is the gold standard of data. That happened at the end of January. The data collection is still under review. The analysis is under review, so I will have to hold on to specific quantitative numbers on people. Any relationship between street, unsheltered homelessness and people experiencing, the asylum seekers. But I will say anecdotally, from what we hear from our outreach teams, limited impact at this point on unsheltered homelessness related to asylum seekers. That doesn't mean no, but limited, that again is anecdotal information. And we will certainly be looking at the HOPE Count data when it comes in. You know, I think with respect to some of the St. Brigid and the re-ticketing, you know, we are certainly aware that people have spent time outside, either overnight or lining up early in the morning. People do have a waitlist number. We are, and you know, I'm speaking as a member of the administration. Department of Social Services is not directly involved in this site, but I can certainly assure you that we use those waitlist numbers. We communicate with clients. People do not need to be spending time outside. Keeping people safe and indoors is a priority, and that's why we have the waiting room facilities that Director Schaefer mentioned.
Some individuals have a number that's like seventeen thousand, five thousand. Are those individuals, are you, when they leave the shelter system, are you, you say only twenty-four percent have reapplied, but are you tracking where they're going? How many actual people are being placed? I mean, you have one hundred and seventy-nine thousand people that have come through the city, fifty-five thousand notices recently, but only twenty-four percent have reapplied. I mean, it's a disparity. And so we're trying to figure out where these individuals are going. And then we present actual people who are going through it earlier today. And yet, I'm not sure where the disconnect is happening between listening to the stories and then really understanding where these individuals are going. They're crammed in commercial basements, they're in the subway, they're sleeping in Tompkins Square Park across the street, hoping, hoping that they get called, but they're not. So how are you all dealing with that, with those disparities in numbers and the number of people that we actually see going through it? Predominantly black and brown people. Thank you, Madam Chair, for the time.
So we want to make sure that everyone has a safe place to be overnight. And so we have our waiting rooms where people can be overnight. If there is unsafe places that people are staying, you know, our system did its job the last couple of days when we noticed unsafe places where people were staying. Our FDNY DOB got involved immediately. And we were, and we connected people to either St. Brigid's or to the Arrival Center, depending on where they were, to make sure that they had a safe place to go indoors.
All right. Thank you. I just, again, I don't want to take away from the DOI report because it's equally as important in our conversations today, so I'm going to just ask a few questions on that, and then I will yield to my colleagues. Regarding the investigation, is there any data on the true eligibility rate that was saved anywhere? And if so, has an analysis been done to understand how much the rate was altered?
Thank you, council member. Let me take, answer that question by starting with taking a step back and talking a little bit about what happened. Families with children, as after they apply at PATH, are placed in a conditional placement, right? So from the moment that you apply at PATH, while the eligibility investigation is ongoing, families are in shelters. Those conditional placements aren't specialized sites or anything like that. It is a shelter unit like any other shelter unit. While, what happened was that in order to keep a relatively flat eligibility rate, the date of determination was altered. It appears by a few days. We can't necessarily go back and recreate it for any given day. But, you know, if I might have been found eligible on a Monday, I was instead found eligible on a Wednesday. I want to make it very clear, absolutely everybody who was, who should have been found eligible was found eligible. And while those eligibility determinations were underway, people were in shelter. So there was no question of people being inappropriately denied access to shelter. It was a question on what day that eligibility determination was made in order to keep a relatively flat eligibility rate. So overall, exactly the same number of people were found eligible for shelter. What changed was the day-to-day rate?
Before I respond to that, I forgot to acknowledge that we've also been joined by PS sixty-two up in the balcony. Hi, guys, from council member Schuman's district. Welcome to City Hall. So if, in fact, if a person was not found eligible on Monday, but they were found eligible on Wednesday, and they were placed, then why go through the trouble of playing with the numbers?
Unfortunately, council member, I can't speculate why the previous administration chose to do what it did. I can acknowledge that it happened. I acknowledge that it should not have happened. I value transparency, and I am committed to making sure that nothing like this happens again. But at the end of the day, the impact was relatively marginal because people were in shelter and they were all, anybody who needed to be found eligible was found eligible.
Inevitably, but we do get, I mean, I wonder if there's a correlation between the calls that we get as members of the council from our constituents who are, you know, telling us that they continue to be found ineligible time and time again and that, you know, the process is extended beyond the amount of time that they should have. So, you know, I think, you know, it leaves people very nervous about their housing situation when they don't have that level of permanency, like they don't have that commitment, right? That you will be housed indefinitely until we find you someplace to stay.
So we've made a number of changes recently at PATH to make it a more customer-focused experience. So prior to COVID, if you were found ineligible and you wanted to reapply, because families are entitled to reapply, it had to be done in person. What we have done more recently is that that first reapplication can be done over the phone. If there does need to be a subsequent reapplication, we do ask that families come into PATH because we want them to be able to connect with a person and to resolve the issues that are inhibiting their eligibility determination. We've also expanded the number of appointments that somebody has with an eligibility reviewer to make sure that there is ample opportunity to get DHS staff the information that they need so that we can reach that conclusion. We've added mediation to the process so that when we are working to determine whether or not somebody does have another housing option, that that is something that we are focused on to see if the, a previous housing option is available to them. We can, we find that mediation can sometimes be helpful. But if mediation is not helpful, if the primary tenant says, no, you know, Molly can't come back, then that is, that's certainly something that we accept.
The DOI report stated that eligibility rate data was being used, is used for budget forecasting and planning shelter capacity. Can you explain how exactly the rate was used for planning during the period when it was being manipulated?
So we, while we, eligibility data is one data point that we might look at as we are doing capacity planning. But as I noted, people who are pending eligibility review are in shelter. And we need to plan for how many people in conditional placements that we are serving, as well as how many people have been deemed eligible. So at the end of the day, far more important for our long-term capacity planning is how many applications we're getting and how large the census is, both of which were unchanged by this practice. In addition, we generally look at longer-term time horizons rather than daily or monthly data for doing long-term projections just because we find it's more reliable. So while we, I absolutely do look at shelter eligibility, I do think it can be a trend and a leading indicator about what might be going on in the housing market. In terms of our capacity planning, this was not a driving data point.
What analysis, if any, has been conducted on the impact of the eligibility rate being manipulated on shelter capacity or budgeting?
So first, let me just say I'm really grateful to DOI for the thorough investigation that they did. I think their report is very informative, and it's something that we've reviewed very closely. Their finding was that the impact was relatively marginal, that because families were in conditional placements while this was going on, so that, you know, from a, on a day-to-day impact, there was little effect on the families experiencing homelessness. The place where there was potential impact, and DOI laid this out in their report, was the point in time when a family might have become eligible for a CityFEPs voucher. But what was not called out in the report, unfortunately, is the state of the New York City housing market, which I'm not saying anything surprising to say, is it's a very tight housing market. We currently have more than ten thousand households in the shelter system who have a CityFEPs voucher, who are searching and looking for housing. The average, on average, a family, from the point in time that they receive what we call their shopping letter with CityFEPs until they actually move out, it's about two hundred days because finding an apartment is really challenging. So while on the margins, this may have delayed the point in time that somebody got a CityFEPs voucher by a couple of days, the impact on move-outs, I don't, you know, every day matters, but it is a matter of days in what is a multi-month period.
I mean, for me, it's more of a, I think that the manipulation didn't really necessarily benefit DHS, or rather, the administration because it gave the impression that the number of folks that were in need of shelter was significantly lower than the actual number of folks in shelter.
So it shouldn't have happened. I do not support, you know, changes in data like this, and it will not, it is not happening now, and it will not happen again. I want to be very clear about that. But, you know, what we are, right now, we are seeing fairly significant swings in eligibility rate depending on whether the bulk of the people who came in in a given week were asylum seekers who really by definition don't have a two-year housing history that we look at, or whether it's people where we're doing a more in-depth investigation. But the average is about, is similar to what the average was during this time period. So there's more variability, but we're not talking about significant changes in overall eligibility because what was going on was changes on day-to-day patterns, but not, nobody was found ineligible inappropriately.
I mean, that's good news, but I think that, you know, it doesn't, it doesn't take away from the fact that, you know, there was a picture that was being painted that was inaccurate. And I hate when we have quotas and numbers attached to the work that we do because it does encourage this type of behavior, unfortunately, you know, especially in politics. And it's, it's just, you know, it's inappropriate and obviously doesn't help us in our oversight abilities or responsibilities.
I agree with you, council member. It is not happening now, and it will not happen again.
I hope not. DOI conducted, in the DOI-conducted investigation into issues involving the city's PATH Center, there was a response to finding weaknesses in policies and procedures at PATH intake centers with respect to tracking the entry and exit of families seeking shelter. DOI recommended the SS create a process for documenting families' arrivals, departure times at PATH. DOI also recommended that the SS maintain structured written requirements for complying with the ten-to-four rule in Section twenty-one, three thirteen, including procedures for reporting violations. Do you plan on implementing DOI's recommendations for strengthening the procedures at PATH related to tracking entry and exit of families seeking shelters? And if yes, when?
Yes, we do plan on implementing the recommendations. We are in the process right now of working through the technological system development that they recommended. You know, we anticipate that we'll have some pieces of that rolled out this spring, although the complete system that they recommend will take some time. We want to make sure that we get it right. And we will absolutely do policy and procedure documents that go with that and train staff fully.
Do we know what process will be developed for documenting the arrival and departure times?
So we're doing initial policy and procedures right now, and then as we build this technology system to do it, we'll certainly have to revise.
Okay. DOI also recommended that the SS track families who choose to intermittently leave PATH to attend to other needs. Will this recommendation be implemented?
So I think this one is a place where it's a little bit challenging because DOI's recommendation on family's actual behavior doesn't entirely line up, right? Their recommendation assumes the family always moves as a unit. In fact, if you have two adults, you know, one adult may stay in the building, the other adult leaves the building, right? So it's a little bit more complicated than what they recommended, and we do need to make sure that we're taking into account sort of the full breadth of human behavior as we are putting together our system. That's the kind of thing that we are thinking through right now.
Are you thinking, in your conversation, are you having conversations with DOI about the complexities of that to get some guidance on what would be acceptable?
We're certainly following up with them about our compliance with their recommendations, yes.
I mean, I just, I keep thinking about when I go into the DMV, you know, they give me that ticket that has the time that I got there. And then when, you know, as I'm moving along, they're tracking every, you know, if I went to the bathroom, if I went outside to get a, you know, something to drink. It doesn't seem like in 2024 that would be that difficult, Mom.
I think that is, that is the general structure that we are going with, and as I say, we'll have pieces of that even this spring. You know, the slight difference between moving through the DMV, which you typically do as an individual, versus moving as a family where people may be making different decisions about where they are in the building. We just need to make sure that we can accommodate all of those nuances. But yes, we are working on it.
Okay. DOI recommended that tracking families through PATH be fully automated by using scanners to track those families through PATH rather than rely on handwritten input. I just, I'm always surprised at how outdated the system is at, the SS. You, yeah, we need to invest a little bit more efficiently in your agency to modernize you and bring you up to code. But is that something that is going to, I'm assuming that's something that's being?
We're in the process of system development now. I would absolutely love to do even more systems modernization across DSS. It's, you know, something that we're looking at across the board and managing our budget there.
Okay. And the DOI recommended that there be an automated process for notifying PATH leadership, Housing Emergency Referral Options Unit Management, and DHS DSS leadership at four AM each morning of the number of families who arrived at PATH or, we go at or before ten PM and who remain at PATH. And if the number is greater than zero, the current shelter assignment status of each family. Will this be implemented?
So we're certainly working on how that tracking gets built into the overall system development that we're doing. I think we want to make sure that there is opportunity for, you know, quality assurance in that as well, but absolutely. for, you know, quality assurance in that as well. But absolutely part of what we are doing is making sure that staff are fully trained with the tools that we have now, and then the tools that we ultimately build, on what escalation looks like, should there ever be another incident.
Okay. So, those tracking mechanisms that were found, that were not in, in place, they're still not in place. So, how are you tracking them now? What's different from what you're doing now than what was being done then?
So, we have some level of tracking system now. You know, people do get a ticket when they come in, and it is, it's a more limited number of points through the journey. So, we're, we're fleshing that out, we're building it. But the, the process of who is in the building at 4:00 in the morning is fairly manual. We are, you know, it is, does depend on talking to people. So, I think with the more evolved system that, that you and I just spoke about, that we'll be able to, to strengthen that significantly.
Would that be more, would, would that eliminate the burden of the human person that's actually now manually, you know, submitting the documentation from having to do that? Because I'm just, yeah.
I'm speculating a little bit here, because it's a system that is, is still in its, you know, design requirement stage, but certainly using technology to support staff, rather than make their lives more complicated, is something that we always look to do.
And there will be training?
Of course, yes.
Okay. Is it, has there been any training, retraining now?
We have certainly, yes, we have done retraining to make sure that people are fully up to date on, on existing policies and procedures, and reinforced escalation strategy approaches if there is an incident. You know, frankly, the fact that, that there was some question about the escalation policies is, in some ways, a reflection of a positive news, because this hadn't happened in the past.
Yeah.
Right? There weren't staff who had been through this before. But, in an unprecedented emergency, and, and really, I do want to take us back to what was going on at PATH in July of 2022. At that point, this was before the response to the asylum seekers had become a whole of government effort, right? So, really, DHS was it. We were on the front lines. Buses were dropping people off on random street corners, you know. Hundreds of families were walking in. We were getting, you know, double or more than double a number of, of clients, and sort of adding to that, and really creating a perfect storm in that week in July, when this was, when families, when we missed the standard, when families stayed past 4:00 AM, we were doing upgrades to CARES, CARES, which is our system of record. So, it was mandated security upgrades. It was really important to happen, but it meant that placement work that normally gets done on an automated basis was getting done on paper and by phone call. So, you really had a perfect storm going on. So, you know, and I'm so grateful to the frontline staff who actually really did manage that perfect storm, and were able to serve families in that environment. But certainly, we are reinforcing what to hap, what needs to happen if there is another need for escalation.
So, you, so there's this training, there's been retraining, has, is there an audit process that's been put in place to ensure that the training is working, and to catch deficiencies in a timely manner?
So, what we're doing is that we're moving this particular, we're moving data points and data management away from, from some of the frontline staff, and moving it into our centralized data management team at DSS. They are reviewing methodology and logging methodology for how we collect data. They will, this is gonna provide some additional checks and balances, and then they'll be reviewing data on a regular basis.
Perfect. Now, do, do we know, I don't think that I saw in the DOI report, there was no indicate, there was no clear way of, because the record-keeping was not great, of determining how many families were impacted by the changing of the numbers. Do you have an idea?
No, unfortunately, I don't. There are a number of reasons why somebody's eligibility determination could be put on hold, some of which are, many of which are, are very valid, right? If a family is, is getting the last piece of information that we need, we don't want to find them ineligible. If we know they might have it in a couple of days, we will hold their determination, so that they don't have to start over from scratch. That's actually a very valid reason for putting a hold on an eligibility determination, and I can't retroactively separate the two.
Understood. What are the requirements for reporting violations to city leadership?
Just to clarify, council member, you're talking about the 10-4 standard. So, frankly, if this, this is an exceedingly rare occasion or occurrence, and the protocol is that staff on the ground need to pick up the phone and call leadership immediately.
Is that happening?
It hasn't happened, because we haven't had any violations. But yes, it will happen, if necessary.
So, we have, okay, so I was, the next question was gonna be, how many violations have been reported since the investigation? Is that, are you saying that number zero?
I will confirm, there might have been one. I will note that right now, the, the standard operating procedure has been paused as per executive order, given the asylum emergency.
Okay. DOI also investigated a separate allegation that DHS manipulated eligibility data from June 17 to 2022. Concluded, they concluded that these efforts to downplay the eligibility rate made the homeless crisis appear less severe. How was PATH, how was the PATH monthly eligibility rate calculated from 2017 to mid-2022?
So, the eligibility rate calculation is the number of people who are found eligible divided by the number of people for whom any form of determination was made, eligible, not eligible. That is still the way that, that calculation happens. What, excuse me, what was going on in the prior administration was that, on any given day, the number of people who were found eligible was, was changed. So, maybe there would have been, and these are hypothetical numbers, I just want to be clear about that, right? Maybe 15 people, 15 families could have been made eligible that day. In order to maintain a steady eligibility rate, five of those were held, they were found eligible the next day. So, the calculation didn't change, it was the date of the eligibility determination. As I noted, during that time period, families had, were in conditional placements, nobody was denied shelter, and the total number of people deemed, found eligible for shelter did not change. It was the date of the eligibility. That doesn't make it right. We should not change data, we need more transparency, but I do want to just be clear about the impacts.
I appreciate that. With DHS's family shelter population being at record highs, it's important for the SS to maintain accurate information about the circumstances at PATH. DOI recommended that an internal audit process should be implemented to ensure that the data made public by DHS is accurate and truthful. Obviously, you said that, you know, you would implement that, I believe you have implemented that. When did you, when was this policy implemented?
We are in the process right now of implementing our audit procedures. We received this report at the, in January, so we're, we're operationalizing now.
I'm sure that you heard rumors before January that this, there was an issue, there was no audit process put in place?
We are, we are working to make sure that we have careful procedures that comply with the DOI investigation. We're doing that now.
Okay. And what has the PATH eligibility rate been since the investigation on a monthly basis?
So, right now, we are seeing quite significant swings in eligibility rate, anywhere from about 35% to about 60%. That is quite unusual. It's really a reflection of our work as part of the asylum seeker response. When we are making significant numbers of determinations on families, on asylum seeker families, because really, almost by definition, they don't have a two-year housing history, they are highly likely to be eligible. So, you might see the, the, some of the spikes in eligibility rate. When, when we're dealing with a more traditional client base, it, the rate comes something that looks a little bit more like the historic.
I appreciate that. I will leave any further questions to my colleagues, but I wanted to ask three questions to, I believe it would be Ms. Schaefer. On January 6, as I mentioned before, a young man was murdered at Randall's Island. Since this event, what measures have been taken to ensure the security of people residing at Randall's Island and other emergency shelters?
Thank you for that question. We take the safety and security of everyone in our shelters as the utmost priority. We have worked to ensure that we have NYPD presence at Randall's, that we've added security cameras, and at all of our sites, we've done a comprehensive security analysis to make sure that we have everything we need to ensure that our, the folks in our sites are safe.
Do you know what the staffing ratios at HERCs is?
I'd have to get back to you on that.
Okay. And that would include, I, I would specifically like to know case managers and security. Because my understanding is that at Randall's Island, there are 50 security officers for 3,000 individuals.
We have spent a lot of time reviewing the different security ratios and other staffing ratios to ensure that it makes sense for the sites that we have, and I'm happy to follow up specifically on Randall's.
Okay. There have been further instances of violence in migrant shelters across the city, including another situation at Randall's, where a security guard was assaulted, and a stabbing of a migrant at Lincoln Center. Actually, the security guard was assaulted, but then the security guard, I just want to clarify, slashed a migrant in the neck, I believe it was. And then we had the, the issue at Lincoln Center on the 28th. What is the administration doing to keep shelter residents and staff safe at all city shelter sites? Specifically, because I've continuously heard the administration say that they are, they're looking into maybe possibly putting in metal detectors and cameras, and, you know, looking at their security, the current security structure. But there has been no change that has resulted from, you know, those statements. So, I, I'm curious to see, you know, to hear what has changed, and what is the plan moving forward?
So, shelter management is an iterative process. We're constantly looking at doing our operations better. As mentioned, we are going through a process, or we have gone through a process, to look at all the security at our sites, and see where tools like metal detectors, tools like cameras are best deployed.
The, the reason that I'm asking the question is because, after the, the friend, who was the young man that was murdered there, by the way, he, that happened January 7, I believe, 6, 7, he's, his body's getting home today. You know, it took us a lot of effort to make sure that we got him home to his mom, because the city didn't even call or offer words of condolences, or made an effort to help ensure that that, that the family got the body, or that it was, you know, transported to, back to his native country. But, the, after, after the friend was stabbed and killed there, there was no urgency, there still to date hasn't been any level of urgency to make any changes to the security structure there. And in fact, the, the, one of the news outlets was out there a few weeks after, the seconds that I'm slashing, and saw that there were migrants that were selling food, right? And in the preparing of the food, they had access to knives, which, you know, it, I'm not, I'm not assuming that they had those knives for, you know, with bad intentions, but the fact that there were knives in the facility that were coming in and out after something so tragic had already occurred, and then was, you know, almost repeated two weeks after, and still no change has been made, gives me the impression that there is no intention of making any additional changes to the security structure there. And that worries me. One, because I find it as a disregard to this, you know, young man's life. But two, the fact that there are people there that may be feeling really unsafe, you know, is troublesome. And I haven't, again, I haven't seen any effort to change the security structure. When you put 3,000 people in once, in any space, it doesn't matter whether they're migrants, whether they're children, whether they're, whoever they are, there's gonna be conflict. We need, we need to be prepared for that before we put the 3,000 people there. 50 guards, and I heard it through good authority, that that's what the number is, is not sufficient. And the fact that there hasn't been an effort to ensure that no weapons are coming in since then, I need an explanation for that.
Thank you for your concern. I'm also happy to sit down with you to specifically go over Randall's. But I will say, there is absolutely urgency on making sure that Randall's is as safe as possible. You mentioned 3,000 people in any site is, is not something we've wanted to do, ever. I want to take a step back and remind folks that, that we are a municipal government dealing with a national crisis. While you may disagree with a lot of, or some of our policies, you can't say we haven't led with care and compassion. I just want to kind of also mention that, because we have tripled our shelter system in the span of two years. In two years, we've tripled our shelter system. And we've provided TPS, work authorization, asylum. We've helped connect people to apartments, we've helped connect people to jobs. But we need more help, so that we don't have to create sites that are 3,000 people big. And we need more help from the federal government. We need them to help coordinate where people are going, we need them to give us more resources. We continue to iterate, we continue to have urgency around the safety of people in our care, but we can't do this alone.
If I could add in here, and I'm, I'm preaching to the choir a little bit, because the council members are here, represent some really terrific partners. But finding locations for shelters has been tremendously challenging. I think there's large-scale agreement that bigger sites are, are hard to operate, but finding sites for, for smaller shelters is, is also something that is challenging. And in community after community, this was true before the asylum seeker crisis, but it continues to be true, you know, DHS gets pushed back. We want to be providing the highest-quality sites that we possibly can. We want to be working with good providers, we want to be work, we want to have quality real estate. We send a letter, as I think you probably all know, every year, to community, council members, community boards, other elected officials, right, looking for sites. Want to really make sure that we are continuing that partnership with this body, with community boards, to make sure that we are having the most community-based citing practice possible, and that we are finding options for smaller, community-based shelters. Again, I think, do think I'm preaching to the choir here, but I think that it's something that we would really like to partner even more with the council on.
And I just, one other point, is that I was just at Randall's yesterday, I believe, with the mayor, talking to the asylum seekers, because as you mentioned, we talk regularly with people in our care, we regularly go on-site visits, because we want to ensure that we know how things are affecting people. But talking to the staff members there, talking to the asylum seekers there, to really emphasize the security, and try to figure out ways we can do things better on that site.
But still, no change has happened in terms of, if I, if I was operating that facility, and somebody died under my watch, my first instinct would be to go in there and figure out what I did wrong, or what could have been done better, understanding, I don't want to, I, again, I've been very, I've tried to be very fair, because I, I do understand how, how difficult, you know, of an endeavor this has been. But, once this young man was murdered, somebody should have gone back and said, okay, you know what, maybe this, maybe this existing structure is gonna, you know, is putting other people at risk, maybe people are bringing in knives because they feel unsafe. At city shelters, routinely, we have metal detectors, and many of them, am I correct, Molly?
Yes.
To ensure that people are not bringing in weapons. And we still haven't done that at the HERCs. And so, I just want to understand, is there a plan to add metal detectors and ensure that everyone that is in those facilities is safe, or not?
As mentioned, we, we're doing a security assessment at all of our sites. Randall's is on the top of that list. And again, happy to sit down to, with you to talk about the specifics. We have made some changes already, and will continue to make changes.
Okay. I, I just want to share with you that the other day, last week, we had a, while, you know, we've been working with the family of the young man that passed away, I've, you know, gotten to know a few of the family members and people, you know, friends that have come here. And there was a young man that came from Denver and was cited at Wards on a Tuesday. I'm just making, it was last week, someday, I don't remember, but by Wednesday morning, he wanted to leave. He was like, it's horrible, there's no place to put your stuff. People, you know, can easily just take whatever property you have. But there are fights in there, there was a fight, that was pretty, you know, disturbing, and the guards didn't come until after, it was already too late. They felt unsafe, they felt that people were, they said that they, they witnessed people that had been barred from the center. people that had been barred from the center, from the site, coming in through the, through back doors. That, that to me is, it raises a lot of red flags. And again, I want to make sure that everybody that's in there is, is feeling safe enough that they don't have to be bringing in a knife and that people that are not bringing in knives feel safe enough to know that nothing, that they're not going to be witness to that. But lastly, I wanted to ask, because I think this is also really important, is after the incident where the young man was, was murdered in front of, you know, many other migrants, was there any effort to bring in any level of like mental health support so that they had, you know, somebody to talk to about what they had just experienced?
And again, happy to have a conversation specific on Randall's. But yes, we have behavioral health specialists on site and we worked with our health and hospitals runs that site and we worked with them to ensure that there was supports for the people who witnessed that.
Appreciate it, thank you. We will now go to Councilmember Stevens, followed by Councilmember Russler, Hanif, and Bor.
Good morning, I think it's still morning, oh no, it's afternoon. Good afternoon, thank you guys for both being here. And I just have like two sets of questions and I'll start one with, you know, I, I think our chair taught, set our sentiments right. I thought that it, you know, it would have been really important for folks to hear the testimony that was happening here earlier today with those courageous young men who were here to kind of talk about their experiences. And I say that because I also was at a mosque recently near my district where about 100 to 200 asylum seekers have been staying because of the 30-day rule and just seeing the conditions there. And I'm just saying, we want to, we want to work, we want to, we want to do something. And even the mosque saying like, we want to help the people, but we're not even getting support from the city and like, they're like, we're helping with, and they're happy to do it, but they're like, they're helping, you know, with food, and they're getting donations from community members for clothes and all the things. And, you know, I've reached out to the administration and haven't gotten any responses back on this. And I, I want to note, I am fully aware this is a federal issue and I agree that they should definitely be doing more. And, you know, I say it all the time, I didn't sign up to be a council member to figure out immigration issues. I signed up to figure out potholes and stop signs, but now here we are. And so we're all in this together, but that doesn't mean that we don't lead with compassion and love and, and do what's right. And this is not saying that you guys aren't working as hard as you can, but it's still a problem. So we can't negate one for the other because yes, it is not, it's, it's a problem, it is a federal issue and all those things, but it's here. And so that means that as we are trying to find it together, we need to be leading with love and compassion. And what I saw at the mosque, when I visited, is unacceptable. And then even the story that these men told today is unacceptable. So we do have to do better as a people. And this is not even just the city, this is just me saying this as a human being. I don't think that people should just suffer in this way and, and all the stories that's been coming out. And I kind of lost in my train of thought, but even something that was said here today, that the wait time after the 30 days, that they're waiting five to 10 days in order to get placed again. And so my thinking around this is like, how is this helpful? And it kind of seems like a redundant of services if we have people cycling in and out. And actually seems like it would cost more money because if I leave, now we have, we're re-administering people over and over again. It sounds like this is a weird cycle that we're putting in and it doesn't sound like it's really cost-effective either.
So thank you for your concerns and I'd also love to talk to you a little bit more about that mosque because we obviously want to make sure that places where people are staying are safe. We, since, since the spring, we've, as I've said before, we've served over 179,000 migrants and we have led with care and compassion and love because we have done everything in our power to stand up at a site to give people immigration support. We've done everything in our power to help people along with their journey, bring in-
Well, if you were here earlier, you would have heard that the young man, the, the gentleman who were here this morning, they said, actually, that hasn't been happening and that they've been doing that on their own. So that's why I think even hearing that today, that statement is, it could be true, but it's not happening consistently because it was said here. So that's what I mean, like the inconsistencies, right?
Yeah, and I mean, we stood up a system of 216 sites in less than two years. We, I want to follow up with those individuals, see which sites they were at, really see what's happening at those specific sites. We, that's why I talk to people all the time, that's why I go to sites, is to really see what's happening and ensure that we are delivering on the most quality product that we can. But I mean, I just, again, I'm going to take a step back and say, when you're, when we are dealing with an influx of 1,000 to 5,000 people every week and we currently have over 64,000 migrants in our care, we have to make hard choices and complicated choices and choices that provide support for the most vulnerable in our care at the most critical points in their journey, which is when they first get here. We can't control what happens at the border. All the things that we can control are what happens when people are in our shelter. And we can't, we need all the tools in our toolbox to continue supporting these newest arrivals and ensure we're doing that with care and compassion. At this point, more than 76,000, or sorry, 76% of people leave our care before the 30 days and it really has helped ensure that we have space and the staff capacity to give people what they need in that first 30 days.
Yeah, so just, and Chair, just a couple more seconds. Just, just really quick, because it's something that you said that was just like a, a red flag for me, just even saying like the critical, you like to serve people at their most critical moment. I think that's subjective because I think if you ask all of them, it's a critical moment. And so that becomes subjective and so I think that that's, and, and again, this isn't saying that folks aren't doing their job. I just think that there are holes in the system and I think the 30-day thing is actually creating more holes than you are anticipating than it, than solving, right? And so if people are already leaving at large numbers before the 30 days is up, then you don't need to have the mandate there. So that to me doesn't, you know, those things doesn't, doesn't sit well with me. But I, I do have another question that I do want to ask Commissioner Molly around. In my district, as we know, a HRE site was just closed and I know it was because it was a leasing issue or something else. But I'm really concerned that a whole section of people in the Bronx, in the West Bronx, now have to travel so far to get to a new site and really trying to just get a better understanding because the, the reasoning's behind it and the way my office has been having an influx because we were their next-door neighbors and now we have become an HRE center, which we can't, right? Everyone is saying that they haven't gotten notices and all these things. Like I just, this rollout has been very messy in the sense of like, like I said, we've been getting a lot of folks in my office, we've had a lot of people standing outside, not being able to notice, people coming back to the office saying that they weren't able to be served and just thinking about how this could have been a better transition and also how we are now really putting a, a number of people in a community out of their way to now have to get services. And I'm really concerned about this. And is there a plan on getting services closer to the West Bronx and to my district anytime soon?
Yep, thank you, Councilmember. You're correct that this traced back to a landlord issue. We were, were subject to the, the whims of the real estate market as well. So we lot, did lose our, fairly suddenly lost a lease on, on one site and so had to restructure services so that we were making use of the real estate that we did still have. We acted very quickly to make sure that we still had a physical presence for all of our real estate, for all of our functions. I think over the couple of years, we'll be able to do better and to distribute services more evenly across the borough. But we do need to do some work on building out some of the site space before we're able to do that. Certainly if we have the notice piece of it, if that has not been adequate, we can, we can make sure that we are re-noticing. And I think from the point that Deputy Speaker Ayala flagged this to us, that we have done some additional noticing, happy to follow up with you offline if we need to be doing more.
Yeah, I just, I just want to say again, like I think sometimes especially, folks forget how my district is a little isolated, especially the High Bridge area. And to go from High Bridge to Hunts Point, that is, that is like a twofer zone. And so we have people who already need services now having to figure out how to make a journey. And so even the thought around like, oh, some of them have been told like, oh, you can do some of this stuff online, blah, blah, blah. If they had those services, they wouldn't need it. And, you know, even to, to go to the extent of like, a lot of times when they were going to the HRA office, they would still have to come to my office, whether it's to get copies and all these other things. And so there's a whole slew of services that they're going to miss out now because we did work kind of hands-in-hand. And I'm not saying that they needed to be there, but I think the consideration for how far it's out, it's really a displacement and a disservice to my district. And I think that, I know you said it's going to take a couple of years. I don't know if we have a couple of years because people will suffer in the High Bridge area of, of my district.
We're happy to work with you on that.
Thank you.
Councilmember Russler?
Great, thank you, Chair Ayala. I really appreciate your tremendous leadership and I want to recognize my friend and colleague Councilmember Halif, Hanif, for her courageous leadership. And thank you both for testifying here today. Just because there's only so much time in Q and A, I would love, if it's okay, Commissioner Park, I'm going to read the DOI report and would love to just follow up with questions. I haven't had a chance to read it yet. We've had some real issues in our district at Le Jolie Shelter and haven't gotten great communication from your team on updates and except for from Vincent, who we appreciate. And similar issue that Councilmember Stevens raised. There have been just a lot of changes. I know it was part of a longstanding plan to benefit centers in downtown Brooklyn and we've been hoping to just get a briefing to understand the timeline and plans. If you could provide that overview for us, we would greatly appreciate each of those things.
Happy to sit down at any time.
Thank you, okay. So for today, I appreciate the chance to just knock those, put those aside. Commissioner Park, you know, every year, if I recall correctly, we see a big increase in children, families in our shelter system at the end of the school year. Is that right?
That is the pre-COVID traditional pattern. In the last few years, things have been a little bit unsettled, but yes, that's historically accurate.
And, you know, families do their best to hold on in doubled-up circumstances and tenuous, challenging dynamics so that kids can stay close to and can, you know, the school that they're attending during the school year. And, and I'm, I, I just can't understand how a 60-day rule for children, for families with kids, is good for them. I, I can't understand how uprooting a family that has, you know, we have a, a shelter that just opened, a HERC that just opened in, Councilmember Hudson's district on the border of mine in Clinton Hill, is sending many dozens of families, dozens of students to two schools in my district, PS 54 and IS 157. And we have brought in all of these donations and supports and the school communities have done an extraordinary job in welcoming these students and families into our community. And we're approaching a 60-day deadline where they're going to be relocated and presumably will go to some other school somewhere far away from Clinton Hill and Bed-Stuy. Is that right?
I will take this question. So we, this administration has really prioritized in this period of emergency, families with children. We haven't made, we, it was an incredibly hard decision to start doing the 60-day notices. It's not something we wanted to do. As everyone knows, the cavalry didn't come from the federal government. We have also said many times that we do not want to disrupt education. Because of really careful coordination and planning with the Department of Education and our staff and the HERC staff and everyone at the Arrival Center, 90% of the children that were affected by this policy remained in the same school. Some of, of the 10% that didn't, some moved away. Some moved to other parts of the nation or other parts of the country, but 90% stayed in their school as, when they, after they made this change. And so we really, really did prioritize education and the education of the youngest children when making these types of choices and moves.
So 90% of the kids who were subject to a 60-day rule, who were forced to uproot their lives and in all likelihood move to not just a different neighborhood, but a different borough, are staying in the same school according to the data that you have as of?
January.
January.
In the same borough. I mean, I think it's more than the same borough.
But they're staying in the same school is the point. Is, I'm just, I mean, the point is that they're maintaining enrollment. And I'll give an example, in Clinton Hill Bed-Stuy, in this area, you know, I, I, as you know, as a native of the 33rd, it's probably the most expensive district in Brooklyn. And it's not easy to live there, especially for a newly arrived migrant family. They're probably moving to a very faraway place, like the Bronx or Staten Island or Southeast Queens or Brownsville where they can manage to live and afford to come into our community. So are you looking at travel times as folks are staying at the same schools? Of the distances that people are traveling and how far people are going? Spending multiple hours a day in each direction is, is not good for a six or seven-year-old either?
We also, the majority of our families were placed in the same borough as well, the borough of their children, their youngest children. We don't track when people leave our care, where they're going, but everyone was given the opportunity to either stay in their same school or change.
So the 90% figure you're referring to is for people who were re-ticketed, placed in another shelter, they were placed in another shelter in, and a majority were placed in the same borough and then?
Majority were placed in the same borough.
And then 90% stayed in the same school. For the families that went through the re-ticketing process, went to a different shelter and stayed. But for everybody else who couldn't make it through that process, we don't actually have any indication of whether they're staying in the same school. Are you tracking that data?
I have to check with the Department of Education.
That's not something that your office is tracking in a proactive way?
We're coordinating with our colleagues at the Department of Education. I'm happy to follow back up with you.
What percentage of the families that have been subject to the 60-day rule stayed in shelter for that and went to another shelter upon relocating, being uprooted?
Sorry, say that question again.
For the families that have been subjected to the 60-day rule so far, it sounds like the most recent data you have is January. What percentage of those families stayed in the shelter system and what did not? How many left?
I'd have to follow back on the exact numbers.
Okay, I just, look, I think that it's fair for, you're not going to have every data point at your fingertips. But, and I appreciate, I mean this, you all have a really hard job. 170,000 people coming through the city of New York without the appropriate federal assistance. It has been deeply challenging and I am empathetic to the challenges that you all have faced and how hard you have worked to try to provide some services and care. But I do think that uprooting families after 60 days is inhumane and it is heartless and it is a really problematic policy for kids and their ability to learn. And, you know, I would have thought that would have been a central piece of the testimony. I would have felt we would have had better data today to discuss this because to me, I, I just can't understand how we don't want that kid staying in the same school all school year to get the help that they need, transitioning to a new country, getting the support that they deserve and figuring things out in the summertime if we need to do so. That would be a much more compassionate and effective policy from my vantage point to support our kids. And I, I leave this hearing no more, even more dissatisfied and concerned than when we started. So, thank you.
Councilmember Hanif and then Councilmember Bor.
Thank you so much. First, I'd just like to start with some kindness. I see Chris here and we've been working very closely. We are welcoming a new shelter in my district and it's been in the news as of late with a lot of opposition. And actually, since the end of last year, a lot of opposition coming in from our neighbors. And I've been steadfast and firm in welcoming this new shelter. It'll have 400 beds. And the coordination that we've had with DSS has been very critical and alongside my elected colleagues, the community board, community groups and other leaders. And while there's a lawsuit now and, and other sort of tactics being utilized to oppose the shelter, we remain committed to, to welcoming asylum seekers. And so I, I share this because I know that I have been one of the most critical voices of the administration's operations and that is a part of my responsibility while also recognizing the reality in which we live in. And I'll be welcoming as many shelters as I need to in my district while pushing for better policies. And now, Molly, your statement I found very offensive. I found it very offensive. your statement I found very offensive. I found it very offensive. I think we can, we can agree that the 30 and 60-day policy is a bad policy and not defend it. I think the administration can just say that, that we have to do this and leave it at that. I just wish that we could accept that we didn't have to defend inhumane policies. Because, one, you weren't here for when the two gentlemen, who've only been here for less than six months, told us their stories. They've been in already four shelters, three and four shelters. One of them is not in a shelter right now. One of them is still looking for a shelter. He had been assigned to a shelter and he had transportation issues, couldn't find his way to the shelter. When he arrived to that shelter, he was, he was told there's no more room for him, and then referred somewhere else. That shouldn't be the story of individuals who are arriving here in the span of three to four months. I don't consider that success. And we've seen over the course of the last several weeks, we heard about the storefront in Queens, we heard about the makeshift bus, we're hearing about overcrowded apartments, we're hearing about cars and trucks. We're seeing our sidewalks, New Yorkers are witnessing what's happening.
So, Councilmember, let me start by thanking you for your leadership and your steadfast support. It really means a lot to have a strong partner as we work on shelter sightings. So, thank you. I mean, I think what you're describing right now is over, in a separate and apart, or compounding, the asylum situation that we're talking about is, is really a reflection of the overwhelming shortfall in New York City of affordable housing, right? The Department of Housing Preservation Development came out with data a few weeks ago. The vacancy rate overall for rental housing is 1.4%. It's much lower for more affordable apartments. It's why the Department of Social Services is actually getting into the affordable housing development space, right? We're using social service dollars to actually grow the pie of affordable housing. We're working really closely with HPD to make sure that there are units for people who are, you know, experiencing homelessness and other low-income households. It's why we've taken the city, perhaps, and made it a statewide tool so that people are able to look at a broader supply of housing. It's really also, I think, an argument for the administration's City of Yes policy that we have to be doing more development. So, you know, I hear your concerns, but, you know, I think everything that you're speaking to really gets back to the, down to the fact that we need more places for people to live, and we look forward as an administration to working with you on it.
And I appreciate that because that, what you just said was nowhere in either of these testimonies. And the housing investment piece is what continues to be left out. And so I'm really glad that that came up in this moment because that is exactly what the crisis, I think, exists in this city. It's not an asylum seeker crisis, it's a housing crisis that has existed. And that investment needs to speed up. And I'm glad to hear that DSS has this component coming up, and I'm gonna, I will support. Excited by City of Yes as well, as we continue to explore all of the options. I have a couple of questions that I want to get into. How many asylum seekers applied for an overnight shelter bed yesterday and were rejected?
We'll have to follow up with you on that exact number. And nobody was rejected. People were put on the waitlist.
So what's the waitlist?
After 30 days, people can go to St. Brigid's and be put on the waitlist for the next available bed.
Right. But the waitlist is, is like a, like code for they don't have a bed?
Everyone is offered a place indoors outside of the elements to wait overnight while they wait for a bed placement.
Will you repeat that?
Everyone is offered a place indoors to wait while they wait for a new placement at their shelter, or a new shelter placement.
Where do they, where do they wait indoors?
There is, we have a couple of sites where people can wait.
Can you describe the conditions of these waiting centers?
There are place indoors where people can wait, where we provide food and other services while they, while they are there.
So do they have amenities like beds or cots?
I want to take a step back here because I think that we're going a little down a rabbit hole, but we've have, we've served over 179,000 migrants. We have said, over time, again and again, that we're running out of space. We have hit our capacity. We said that many, many months ago, and we are doing everything we can to get people, to get people new shelter placements as quickly as, as we can.
That's not the point. We know, we know that. We know that, 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 we know that from the start. We've been saying that over and over, over the last two years. It's okay to say that there isn't a bed in these waiting centers, that what we're witnessing, what this, what the members have said here, that what we're seeing is true. What kind of data is available right now? Like, how are you, like, the percentage that was shared about leaving the system, how are you collecting that data?
As you know, it is a vast program that we run. And so we have a data system that all of our agencies use to be able to better understand where people are in our system. So we use our data system and we make to make the best data-driven decisions we can and report things like how many people stay and how long they stay.
And then for those who accept the re-ticketing option that the city is pressuring folks to take, how is the city working with other municipalities to coordinate arrival and transfer case management on things like applications for asylum, TPS and work authorization?
So we have, thank you for asking about re-ticketing. It is one of the tools in our toolbox. We started doing re-ticketing in the Arrival Center because we knew that a lot of people, as they were coming from the buses in Texas, didn't actually necessarily want to be here. That was the only way out of town. And so we are really proud of the fact that we've been able to help people take the next point of their journey, connect with family or friends in other parts of the nation. And at this point, I think we've, we've re-ticketed over 28,000 people, including, which is more than 25% of our shelter population.
I want to really emphasize what, what Director Schaefer said about people not necessarily wanting to come to New York. I mean, it's actually astounding to me, some of the families that we've worked with in the DHS system who actually wanted to be in Texas. They had families there, family members there, other things like that. But they were put on a bus irrespective of where they wanted to be. So, you know, I heard the mention of pressuring people. Actually, this is what, this is the right option for a lot of people because they weren't given options when they, when they crossed into Texas.
And sorry, just one other point on that. The majority of our re-ticketing actually happens at our Arrival Center, and we give the option to be re-ticketed throughout the entire stay. The other thing that's really important about what Commissioner Park said is that one of our top destinations is Texas. So people are being sent here, and then they want to go directly back.
And is there a relationship with any of the municipalities there or the elected officials?
Yeah, absolutely. So we have our own coordinating meeting with other cities that have OASO-like entities that are really dealing with this crisis to really talk about best practices and figure out if there's ways to do more formal resettlement programs. We're also through Moya's Cities for Action Coalition, we're constantly talking to other cities and trying to figure out what makes the most sense for all of us.
And then for the, the St. Brigid's re-ticketing center, on the line, are you, is there case management and folks there to share out their options to apply for asylum or TPS or any of the other services?
So we do case management throughout our entire system. So from the second that you get into a shelter placement, you are given case management options as well as when we have appointments, appointments with our asylum application help center. Or if you want legal support, we'll sometimes refer you to Action NYC or other resources that the city has to bear on, to help people with their legal paperwork.
Understood. So I just want to name how indicative it is that the administration is unwilling to describe the conditions of the waiting rooms. I, I've been on the, the site of the line at St. Brigid's and had asked about the waiting room and had even witnessed some of the, the individuals who had been sleeping in, in some of these waiting rooms and had like scars on their, on their bodies because they hadn't showered for days and had no access to medical care. No beds or cots, just like whatever space they could find and amass and sleep in whatever position they can. And your unwillingness to provide a yes or no answer is, is very telling. And I think as an administration, even if the answer is no, there are no beds, that should be the answer. You could easily set these up, but you're trying to make things as untenable as possible for these folks who they leave. And we are, we are certainly witnessing some of that, but we are also experiencing, seeing and experiencing the exploitation, a wave of exploitation that is going to increase. And then we'll have to, we'll have to address that as well. Thank you so much.
I too want to thank you. I know it's a hard job. And I do want to thank you because Manhattanites are staying in Manhattan, and I appreciate that in terms of schools. I check every single one. That's why I know. But my question is, so you stay in Manhattan, you're in school, up to fifth grade, then what happens after 60 days in your new location? That's what, and parents are asking me, and I don't know the answer to that. In other words, you know, summer comes, you want to go stay at PS 87 or whatever. How does that work?
So it's the same process that people have now. They will go back to the Arrival Center, they'll reapply. We will take a holistic picture of their family composition, what schools they're in, and, and what vacancies we have, and attempt to place them as close to their school as possible.
Okay. I have to say, then it gets really crazy because I think what's happening is some folks are going just to the apartment basement in Queens. A lot of them are going to Newark, as you probably know, because they are afraid of the next step, right? That you're just describing. So at some point, maybe through the legislation, I hope the 60-day, 30-day for families ends. Because I do, okay, now we've got them under a first guise. Maybe they do have family in Texas and that's worked out. Some of them are coming back though, as you know, and they're calling the schools because that's where they know a trusted partner, and they're returning. Because wherever they ended up in Idaho or whatever is not great. So I'm just suggesting that we don't go through this again. I mean, I do know that the numbers of families going into the schools is going down because I assume that whatever's going on at the border, whatever, people are not hearing great things about New York, for whatever reason. So maybe we don't have to go through the 60-day thing again with the families. Is that being considered?
So I want to say that things at the border are incredibly dynamic, as you know.
We know.
Numbers are starting to tick up again, which is, you know, is what it is. And so we constantly have to pivot and shift and manage in terms of peaks and valleys, in terms of times of surge and times of not surge. We, I cannot speak enough about the heroic nature of school staff.
I've said that over and over again.
Like, it's, it's amazing what the, what they've been able to provide the kids. And we will continue to make sure that we are not disrupting kids' schooling as best as possible.
All right. But I'm just, you know, so your kid goes from fifth grade to middle school, and then you're screwed because you're not under the, under your elementary school, you can stay in Manhattan issue. So I'm just suggesting that the second round of 60 days be reconsidered. I'm putting it on the table. Number two, I always ask, and you hate to answer, about the faith-based. What in hell's name are we doing about the faith-based? I have synagogues and churches. Forget the sprinkler system. We got two exits. We've been doing it for 30 years. Nobody ever got hurt. And of course, in the mosques, you've got hundreds of people, I know plenty of chittrists in synagogues just doing it. Boy, they're doing it for eight, they're doing it for 10. They don't have a damn sprinkler because they don't need one. They got two exits. I know this may not be your fault. You can get with 1,000 or 2,000 people tomorrow if we open up these faith-based, all of which want to open up. I'm sorry. And it costs half what you're paying in the shelters, or maybe less. I don't understand this, really.
We 100% agree with you.
But you're not, but...
It's a key tenet of where we want to move forward. We've actually been able to open a couple more of them.
Three, three!
Yeah, but it's moving much more quickly.
There were two last week, and now there are three.
Yes. There is, it's moving much more quickly than it has been. We've been able to work with our partners in DOB and FDNY to ensure that we're doing this in the safest way possible, but also loosening some of the restrictions so we can bring on these sites more quickly. It's something we also really want to see as the next phase of this and where we actually help connect people so that they can have that community and faith support.
I mean, it's, I'll leave it at that, but just so you know, I don't think even what you have loosened in terms of the rules are going to be enough to open up enough. You want 19 to 15, fine. Some of these folks only take 10. Take 10! Okay. It's, it's the same thing. It's too rigid. It's too rigid. And that's why you have some of these issues, because you're being too rigid, in my opinion. My other question is, do we know how many people are living in New York? I mean, you heard about the stores in Queens, blah, blah, blah. We got the mosque. Do we have some sense of how many other folks are living in conditions because they have no place else at this moment? They don't want to be in the shelter. They can't get into the shelter. Do you have any sense of what those numbers are?
So we don't track where people go after they leave our care. But whenever we find unsafe environments, we invite people back to shelter if that's where they need to be while we vacate a location.
And then, and then just finally, the question of what are you going to do about the food issue? Because that does seem to be a challenge. I think Dr. Long is great. I know that, you know, DHS is helping, but is there some rethinking about food contracts?
We are always rethinking all of our contracts, especially as we're in this period of transition. We've been doing this for now a year and a half, almost two years. And so we are looking at all of our contracts and looking how we can save money and how we can do this better, especially with our pegs. And so we're constantly looking for better ways to do food.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have one, just, no, I'm sorry. I have just one further question regarding the, Councilmember Hanif mentioned something that reminded me that in the beginning of the pandemic, when folks were coming into, not only through the intake sense about at the HERCs, when they will come, when they were arriving, there was, they were screened for any communicable diseases. Is that still happening?
Yes.
And are we still quarantining folks that have COVID?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to check. Thank you so much to both of you for coming.
We like Chris too, just so you know.
I like Chris too.
Thank you. That'll be all. Thank you.
We're now going to call up the next panel, which will be comprised of Nicole Crystal from the Office of the New York City Comptroller. And you can begin whenever ready.
Thank you, General Welfare Committee, for calling this hearing, and to Councilmember Hanif for introducing a bill which would put an end to the city's cruel and inefficient 30 and 60-day shelter limitations. My name is Nicole Crystal, Housing Organizer at the New York City Comptroller's Office. As a child of immigrants from Ukraine, I've seen the ways government assistance made all the difference. When my family came to the US, it did not take them 30 or 60 days to get on their feet. It took closer to a decade, a decade with rental assistance, free English language classes, and a strong community of support and political will. The New York City Comptroller's Office strongly opposes the 30 and 60-day shelter limit policies, which are nothing more than a backdoor effort to chip away at the city's 40-year-old right to to chip away at the city's 40-year-old right to shelter. Our office commends Councilmember Hanif for standing up to the scapegoating of immigrants and urgently support her bill. Better management, not shelter evictions, would help asylum seekers get on their feet, join our workforce, and accelerate our economic recovery. Our office has been closely tracking the numbers of recent arrivals impacted by these shelter stay limits. As of February 4th, a total of over 7,000 families with children in emergency shelters have been given 60-day notices. Those 7,000 households include approximately 14,200 adults and 13,400 children. I'm happy to break those numbers down further. In January, our office launched an investigation into the 60-day rule to learn more about how this policy is being implemented, its potential harmful impact on asylum applications and work authorization, and the extent to which this policy is displacing children from their schools. This investigation is currently ongoing, and we will update the council when we have findings to share. Earlier this week, our office released a report that found a lack of coordination across multiple emergency contracts that led city agencies to overpay millions of dollars to staff asylum seeker services. Rather than evicting families from shelter in the middle of winter, the city should insist on getting the most competitive prices from its own contractors to keep costs down. Emma Lazarus famously said, "Give me you're tired, you're poor", but not just for 30 or 60 days. There are other paths forward, through immigration legal help, workforce development, and real case management. We can't roll back the city's fundamentally ingrained right to shelter in the moments when we need it most. We can address this challenge with common sense, competence, and compassion. Thank you. We've submitted more detailed written testimony that also highlights the experiences our office has had with the asylum seeker crisis. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. We'll now call up the next panel. The next panel will be, and I apologize if I miss pronouncing your name, Yahira Saldra from La Morada, Chloe Brier, Madeline Elphbein, and Anthony Feliciano. And just a reminder, due to time constraints, we have a two-minute time limit on witnesses who are members of the public. And you can begin whenever ready.
Greetings and thank you to the committee and for the introduction of 210. I'm here today representing the Interfaith Center of New York, where we work on something called equipping houses of worship to support migrants. An initiative that has garnered a large number of houses of worship across the five boroughs to do just that. Likewise, I support the asylum seekers shelter program, which has city participation. In this capacity, it has been an honor to work with houses of worship who offer every week men and women and children who come from outside New York and are fleeing violence and poverty, to exercise a sacred responsibility to welcome the stranger. This means meals, clothing, legal consultation, temporary shelter, some in partnership with the city, but not enough. And then also vital communications. Mosques, that as I mentioned outside, have become glorified post PO boxes so that people are actually able to receive critical information from the federal government about their asylum or immigration status. They also are doing accompaniment to family members who are having to check in at the Roosevelt Hotel to make sure that the family feels safe, the children aren't separated, the school bus doesn't arrive, and there's no parents there. So, this is, these are some of the ways. And in some cases, the goals are shared between the city and these houses of worship. We all wish to make New York a stronger place because of the gifts that people come from around the city, around the world with. In other times, there are obstacles that the city has created. Those include the general obstacle of hostility in so many places, often fanned by the flames of polarizing rhetoric. We've seen the obstacle of inconsistency across government agencies. Houses of worship that set forward, that as Councilmember Brewer said, are often stymied by bureaucratic regulations despite the invitation. And finally, the destabilizing impact of the 30- and 60-day rule, the evictions, the re-ticketing, and so forth. And right now, those warming centers would just add an extra step in prohibiting the ability of people to settle in. We wonder if the places that are currently providing chairs have even been asked if they would be able to provide cots that would help people get a night of sleep. So, thank you very much, and we hope that moving forward, we can be more aligned with goals that we all, as New Yorkers, embrace. And if, you know, we want evidence that we've all been able to do this before, I think a visit to the Tenement Museum on the Lower East Side is a good reminder that immigration is truly one of New York City's lifeblood. So, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. My name is Madeline Elphenbein, and I am one of 6,000 members of Jews for Racial and Economic Justice. And I'm here today to speak in support of ending shelter restrictions as a New Yorker, as a parent, and as a Jew. My child is a student at PS 125 in Morningside Heights. Last September, she started second grade along with two new classmates who are asylum seekers from Venezuela. In December, we learned that one of them was forced to leave because her family had been turned out of their shelter after reaching the 60-day limit. Her classmates wrote letters to Mayor Adams to let him know what happened. And here is a part of the letter that my daughter wrote. "Would you like to have made friends and have to leave them? I definitely would not like that. My friend Chris Marie had to leave our class because she had no housing. I think you should give migrants more housing, so no one has to leave their friends." How is it that a second grader understands what our city does not? The cruelty of shelter restrictions goes beyond the children enforced is out into the cold. It rubs off on all of us. In fact, much of our city does understand this. Our school has dozens of students who are asylum seekers. We have room for them, and we are glad to welcome them. And across the city, as we just heard, ordinary New Yorkers are stepping up. We're doing our best to find shoes, and coats, and underwear, and toothbrushes, and jobs for our new neighbors. But our best efforts are not enough when our city government refuses to do its part and provide the bare minimum, which is a safe place to return to every night. Instead, the current labyrinth-themed bureaucracy we just heard described in detail only adds to their litany of hardships. The system is not doing its job. The cruelty of these restrictions would be bad enough on their own, but it's deeply offensive the way this cruelty is being justified, as if it were on our behalf. What I've heard from the mouth of our New York mayor is beyond what I ever expected to hear. And I'll say that as a Jew, the hairs on the back of my neck stand up when I hear him blame migrants for the budget cuts he proposes, for reasons of his own. My forebears are migrants, all of our forebears are migrants, and today's migrants do not threaten my well-being, but the mayor's xenophobic lies and his policies do. Jews for Racial and Economic Justice stands alongside dozens of other groups in calling foul on the mayor's attempt to pit the housed against the unhoused. We know that all of us come from somewhere, that we are all here together now, and that our fates are bound together. I also just want to end by saying that our kids are watching us. They see people sleeping in the rough every day. They see their friends disappearing from classrooms. They see people falling asleep while standing up, waiting in line for a chance to sleep indoors. They want to know what kind of a city they're being raised in. Are we a city that turns its back on their friends? Thank you.
Thank you, Chairperson Ayala and Councilmember Hanif, for the opportunity to testify today. My name is Anthony Feliciano. I'm Vice President for Advocacy at Housing Works. Housing Works comes today because we are supportive of the proposed local laws under consideration by the council. Housing Works is proud to operate two hotels for asylum-seeking families that currently house 535 individuals, of whom almost half, 244, are children. Each household we serve is eager to work, to contribute to the life of New York, while bettering their lives. They have the same hopes and the dreams as every group of immigrants that have come to our city and have mated the rich and diverse place that we all love. Indeed, the asylum seekers we house have a deep culture of working and are eager to gain employment. They take the best possible care of their children, their families, and they endeavor to ensure that their children receive education they deserve. But like every group of New York immigrants, they're dealing with formidable legal language and cultural challenges. We're at the additional barriers to basic survival services. Can only deepen their marginalization. Housing Works believes that as a city, we have not only a legal, but also a moral obligation to provide safe shelter for new arrivals. We at Housing Works are deeply relieved that the asylum-seeking families we serve in our Department of Homeland Services-funded hotels are not impacted by the mayor's 60-day shelter limit. But at least not yet. At least not yet. We've been shocked by everything, but nothing could have prepared us for unmanageable next steps of imposing a 60-day limit on safe shelter for families who have happened to be housing shelters operated under agencies such as OEM and Health and Hospital System. Housing Works and the new immigrants we house have every reason to believe that this lawlessness and uncomfortable process of denying shelter will continue unless the city council steps in to stop it, as you're doing now. We all are proud that a New York state constitution, reflecting in over 40 years of court orders and local laws, require that our city and state provide shelter and service to all single adults and families experiencing homelessness. It is simply not true that we lack the resources and the capacity to meet current needs. What we lack is political will. In the face of record homelessness and record number of evictions and unacceptable number of vacant, affordable, and supportive housing units, we can and must deploy every tool at our disposal to keep low-income households from losing housing and get New Yorkers experiencing homelessness back into permanent housing more quickly. We, of course, join the call for federal government to increase funding to help the city meet the needs and to grant immediate work authorization for new arrivals, also desperately want unemployment. But meanwhile, however, these new immigrants we have undertaken long and arduous journeys at the risk of their lives and are our neighbors, and we cannot abandon them.
Thank you, and thank you all for your support. Obviously, we heard today from those two brave individuals that came in to testify. And I say brave because they were people that were registered to speak and did not feel comfortable coming in to do so because they feared retaliation. And it takes a lot, and it shouldn't, you know, take so much energy, mental clarity to come here and be able to share your truth. So, you know, thank you, because I know that without the resources that you will provide individually, these individuals would be completely lost. And thank your daughter for that beautiful note. From the mouth of babes, right? Thank you.
Thank you to this panel for your testimony. We'll now move to the next panel, which will be a hybrid panel. Will be comprised of Christine Clark, Alexandra Doherty, Chris Mann, Will Watts, Jose Perez, and these are all, those are all individuals joining us in person, and virtually, Adam Roberts. And we'll begin with those who are in person. You may begin.
Good afternoon, Chair Ayala. Thank you for the opportunity to testify. My name is Christine Clark. I'm the Chief of Litigation and Advocacy at Legal Services NYC. We provide civil legal services to over 100,000 low-income New Yorkers every year in a range of areas including housing, immigration law, family law, public benefits assistance, and workers' rights. Many of our clients are immigrants, and many of them have experienced or are currently experiencing homelessness. Some of them are in the shelter systems that we're talking about today. I don't think I have anything to say that probably isn't going to be said by my colleagues, but I felt an obligation on behalf of my clients and my neighbors to say it anyways. These length-of-stay restrictions being imposed on newly arrived New Yorkers are cruel, unnecessary, and punitive by design. They, in many ways, harm children the most. I think we've talked about that a lot today. It prevents them from creating the community bonds that children need to thrive, particularly children in crisis or children if you experience trauma. It prevents them from getting an education of really any kind, let alone the kind of education the New York State Constitution promises them. You know, I think we've heard a lot from the administration today implying that kids aren't being moved out of their schools. You know, we're New Yorkers, these are our neighbors. Their kids go to school with our kids. We know what's happening with them. And these parents are in crisis. They're terrified of what's going to happen to their kids. Of course, this chronic instability hurts children, not only the newly arrived children. We've heard from teachers and parents about the harms-up. For example, the letter that that person who just testified about, that her kid wrote, you know, this is destabilizing for the entire classroom. It is horrible for children to watch these kids cycle in and out of their schools and not be able to make friends with them, and to explain to them why it's happening. It's heartbreaking. There are a slew of collateral consequences that happen from these shelter limits for children, for everybody. It prevents people from getting employment, obtaining work authorization, and maintaining the stability the administration claims to want. I do want to say briefly, the extent that the administration refers repeatedly to this as an emergency or a crisis implies that it's short-term or that it's going to end soon. And there's no reason to think that. We have to come up with long-term solutions. And making 50,000 people sleep on the streets or in waiting rooms every 60 days is not a long-term solution. Thank you so much. Again, I really appreciate the opportunity to testify.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Alexandra Doherty. I'm a Senior Staff Attorney and Policy Counsel in the Civil Justice Practice at Brooklyn Defenders. And I'd like to thank the council for inviting us to testify today. I'd specifically like to talk about barriers to accessing shelter as well as increasing instances of punitive actions by shelter staff which have made the right to shelter inaccessible to many New Yorkers. All families living in shelter are under high levels of stress and uncertainty and are subject to heightened surveillance. Residents are at an increased risk of contact with the criminal and family legal systems because shelter staff are not adequately trained to deescalate potential conflicts. And they often resort to calling law enforcement or ACS rather than problem-solving. And this just perpetuates the trauma and disruption that shelter residents are already experiencing. Recently, we've been seeing shelter staff call ACS to report residents based on completely unfounded allegations and minor shelter rule infractions. One client was recently informed that a failure to participate in a mandatory fire drill, which was set to happen within a 24-hour window, would be considered child neglect and would result in an ACS complaint. Involvement in the criminal or family legal systems can have particularly devastating consequences for any family, but particularly for recently arrived immigrants without legal or pending status. An arrest alone can lead an asylum seeker to immigration detention. And the recently announced changes to our detainer laws would allow ICE to detain and deport someone without any criminal trial or conviction even. And amidst this environment, shelters are increasingly creating a pipeline from migrant shelters to the criminal and family legal systems. Because our clients are often navigating, well, I'll direct you to our comments for more detail, and I'll just wrap up by saying we wholly support today's bills. It's an important step to ensuring the right to shelter for all New Yorkers. And we'd like to encourage the city to take this opportunity to address problems in shelters with more robust social services. As folks before me have mentioned, we need access to benefits and housing subsidies in all shelters. We need access to mental health care, legal services, to get folks into permanent, stable housing. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Deputy Speaker, for having this really important hearing today. My name's Chris Mann. I'm the Assistant Vice President of Policy and Advocacy at WIN. We're the largest provider of shelter for families experiencing homelessness in New York and also the nation. We serve around 7,000 people every night, including more than 3,600 children. And, you know, through all of this, I always try to remind people that, you know, 75% of the new arrivals that are coming are families with children. So, these 30- and 60-day rule policies are having a direct impact, not just on single adults, which is egregious, but particularly on children. WIN's proud to provide shelter for families in need, helping to satisfy the city's right to shelter. Since its inception four decades ago, the right to shelter has prevented nearly the right to shelter has prevented nearly a million people from having to sleep on the streets. We know that our right to shelter sets us apart from other cities, and we should be proud of that. We should be protecting that. And we also know it's popular. In a poll commissioned by WIN and the New York Immigration Coalition, we found that 80% of New Yorkers support the right to shelter. So it's not just humane, but it's also supported by a very large majority of New Yorkers. Unfortunately, Mayor Adams has eroded the right to shelter by implementing the 30- and 60-day policies. Because of these forceful evictions, thousands of homeless New Yorkers and migrants have been evicted from shelter and forced onto the streets. We know what these policies do. They rip children out of their schools. They disconnect families from the support networks that they built, and they force people onto the streets, all during the coldest months of the year. Right now, there are over 4,000 people waiting for a shelter placement and more than 1,000 people on the street as a result of these policies. We're proud to support Councilmember Hanif's legislation, Intro 210, that would ban the 30- and 60-day rules. And I'll end by saying, the only answer to mitigating homelessness is housing. We need to implement the City FEP's expansion that you all passed this summer. Get faith-based shelter beds online. Make sure that people have legal ability to work so that they can really thrive here. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Deputy Speaker and the council, for this opportunity to speak with you today. My name is Will Watts, and I am the Deputy Executive Director for Advocacy with Coalition for the Homeless, which has over 40 years been defending and expanding and protecting the right to shelter along with our partner, Legal Aid Society. When I was here in August, I opposed arbitrary time limits on shelter stays that failed to consider each person's individual circumstances. What we have witnessed at St. Brigid reinforces our conviction that no policy should relegate people to sleeping on chairs, on bare floors, the streets, or in the subway. We encountered numerous people who, like the gentleman from earlier today, are experiencing such horrors after reaching the end of their 30 days in shelter. Take, for instance, Mr. Amir from Sudan. At the time we met him, he had been without a placement for 20 days. He diligently returned to St. Brigid day after day, waiting for his number to be called for a new shelter bed. Unsuccessful, his only option was to return to a church that he had been staying at in order to escape the cold, something that was actually really important for him because he suffers from a heart condition that is aggravated by cold weather. Yet, there were evenings when he wouldn't make it back to the church in time, and so his only option was to stay in the subway. Now, this was a foreseeable result of a policy focusing more on shuffling people around than keeping them in shelter, engaging in the casework that's necessary to facilitate transition to self-sufficiency. To our knowledge, families with minor children are not having the same experience. Nonetheless, the 60-day limits are equally inhumane and unnecessary, especially when the state's migrant relocation assistance program has housed only 174 families. Instead of subjecting children to disruptions in their education and further trauma, this administration should, among other things, be putting pressure on the governor to improve that program so that more families can be resettled in permanent housing. Otherwise, it's just a matter of time before families with children will be sheltering in subways, just like Mr. Amir. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't think that people understand the dynamics of what's happening here and just how many hands it takes to really ensure that we're providing adequate resources for human beings, because these are people. And as I'm sitting here talking to you, listening to you, the mother of the young man that was murdered at Randall's Island is sending me a photo of her son's body arriving to Mexico, to Venezuela, and, you know, how badly she feels that she had to get her son back in this way. But I don't think, as I'm, the more I learn about this, because it's a very difficult subject, and there's been so much that has been said that has, I think, poisoned, you know, the minds of average New Yorkers into thinking that, you know, people that are seeking asylum, migrants, are, you know, the bad guys here, not realizing, you know, that families, like the one that I was just talking about, you know, they're making $20 a week in salaries and have to feed entire families, young children, people that are really, you know, that are persecuted and have to stand in line sometimes for days just to be able to have access to a bag of rice to have something to put on the table. And so they don't leave willingly just because we're offering, you know, all of these lavish gifts, because we're not. They leave out of necessity. And when they get here, we have a responsibility to make sure that they're safe while they're under our care. And I want to be clear. I've always said that I don't believe that, you know, we should house people indefinitely. We shouldn't. We should be helping them figure out what the path is towards self-sufficiency, and that requires intensive case management. And that is why, you know, I asked that question at the beginning, is because I think that that factor is missing, and unfortunately, a lot of you are filling in those gaps. But the demand is higher than, you know, even with all of these resources, we're able to really, truly effectuate any change. But thank you for your services and for coming today, because I think this is important, not only to show solidarity and support for the bills that are being introduced, but, you know, just also to shine a light on your experiences, because those experiences are real too. So, thank you. And I think we have one more person on the line.
Yeah, we'll turn it now over to Adam Roberts, who's on Zoom.
Thank you for holding this hearing today. I'm Adam Roberts, Policy Director for the Community Housing Improvement Program, also known as CHIP. We represent New York's housing providers, including apartment building owners and managers. Our members operate New York's rent-stabilized housing, which makes up nearly 1 million units of affordable housing for voucher holders and other New Yorkers. We strongly support Intro 210 and other legislation that would prohibit city agencies from imposing limits on the length of shelter stays. Shelters say restrictions create a major challenge for residents looking for permanent housing. They rely on shelters as temporary housing while awaiting placement in rent-stabilized or other types of permanent housing. In the approval process to place, voucher holders can take up to six months. Yet, limiting the length of time in shelters, even with other actions the council has taken, like expanding voucher eligibility, will not sufficiently help shelter residents secure permanent housing. The biggest obstacle to permanently housing shelter residents is the lack of rental housing currently available to voucher holders. Tens of thousands of rent-stabilized units remain vacant after long-term occupancies. According to the Independent Budget Office, 42,275 units were vacant in 2022, of which 13,362 were vacant for two years. And the 2023 Housing and Vacancy Survey showed there were 26,310 units vacant but not available in the first six months of 2023. These apartments remain vacant because the renovation costs are incredibly costly. Most apartments coming off long-term occupancies require lead abatement, asbestos remediation, kitchen and bathroom renovation, electrical rewiring, and subfloor replacement, which combined can cost $100,000 for a one-bedroom unit. This problem is compounded by voucher holders' inability to use the full amount of their voucher if the apartment's legal rent is below the voucher amount. Two years ago, the state created Private Housing Finance Law 610 to address this problem. Unfortunately, city agencies refused to implement this law, severely reducing the amount and quality of housing available to voucher holders. Voucher holders would have access to better quality housing if this law was implemented as broadly as the statutory language permits. We appreciate the council's commitment to housing current and prospective voucher holders, particularly those residing in shelters. However, we need to ensure homes are actually available for shelter residents so there are places to permanently house them. Again, thank you for holding this hearing today.
Thank you for your testimony. We're now going to move on to the next panel. Thank you to this panel for your testimonies. The next panel will be comprised of Jose Perez, Johann Velasquez, Amia Biradavolu, Tawaki Komatsu, Anne Faucet Ambia, and Christopher Johnson.
Excuse me. We're going to start on this side.
Muy buenas tardes. Agradecido con la gente de Nueva York por brindarnos el apoyo de estar aquí hoy en día. Queríamos saber una cuestión sobre la ayuda que están brindando sobre los Chester y las ayudas sobre un protocolo de social. También queríamos preguntar a veces, ahí sí donde nos envían, que nos dicen que hay unos beneficios en los cuales no brindan el apoyo pero como tal. Entonces me dieron una dirección que nos iba a dar un apoyo y en la cual no.
Sí, yo creo que ella necesita que vayas a paso para que ella pueda traducir.
Okay. So he's thanking you guys, and then he's basically saying that he wants to talk about issues about the social security, right? Social, no? Okay. Okay, paso a paso, no?
Entonces nosotros queríamos saber sobre, sí, sobre esa ayuda que dicen que brindan, pero cuando uno va al sitio, no dan el apoyo, que no brindan el apoyo.
Yeah, he's saying that they say that they offer these services, but when you arrive at the place, they don't have the services, and then the services, they just send you to another place.
Buenas tardes. Nosotros por cuestiones de destino. Somos inmigrantes venezolanos.
Good afternoon. We are both migrants from Venezuela.
Venimos para acá porque estamos quejando de tenemos problemas en el Chester donde estamos ubicados.
We're here because we have issues with the system that are very obvious.
Venimos a la alcaldía ya que venimos a pedir una ayuda porque estamos pasando muchas necesidades en el Chester donde estamos ubicados.
We've come to our government because we are struggling and we need assistance.
Ya que somos inmigrantes y venimos por la cuestión de que tenemos 40 días para podernos ir.
Because we're migrants and we only have a certain amount of 30 days before we can leave.
Yo tengo permiso de trabajo y el social, en la cual estoy buscando trabajo y no consigo. Y vine a la alcaldía para que me ayudaran a buscar trabajo. Y estamos pasando muchas necesidades ya que no tenemos recursos para movilizarnos.
He's saying he has his social security already, but he's not able to find a job, and he needs more support, and is not getting it in order to actually get on his feet.
Una de las penurias que estamos pasando es que estamos en el Chester y la comida del Chester no nos funciona. Tenemos que comer en las iglesias.
He's saying the food in the shelters is not sufficient, and they have to go to the churches to get food.
En la cual, cuando venimos aquí a la alcaldía a pedir ayuda, cosa del destino, había esta reunión aquí.
So today, they decided, because they're not getting enough food, to come to City Hall, and coincidentally, today, we were talking about this issue, and there was a protest outside about this issue.
Yo le hice el comentario a uno de los dirigentes que le estaban planteando nuestras necesidades, lo que estamos pasando. Y él me dijo casualidad, vinieron el destino positivo que aquí lo van a atender.
He's saying, coincidentally, he spoke to one of the people in the protests outside, and he was like, because of destiny, you, we're having this city council meeting, and you can speak your issues here right now, today.
En realidad, yo tengo 52 años, toda mi vida he trabajado. Me tocó inmigrar para Estados Unidos, aquí estoy aquí. Gracias, tengo permiso de trabajo del social, estoy buscando trabajo y no puedo conseguir, y estamos pasando muchas necesidades ya que no tenemos recursos para nosotros movilizarnos.
They, he migrated here, and they are urgently needing resources to mobilize themselves.
Y en realidad estamos aquí ya que tenemos que movilizarnos rápido, ya que en el Chester tenemos que irnos. Y uno de la enfoque es que en realidad lo que, el destino de la vida es que en el Chester se están enfocando nada más en los 30 días para no todo irnos. Pero las instituciones nos están enfocando en que en ese lazo de 30 días deberían de ayudar al inmigrante a conseguir trabajo para que con el trabajo pueda irse a pagar su alquiler, a pagar su alquiler, a pagar sus necesidades. Y así uno le libra ese destino a la alcaldía de estar pagando. Nosotros pues están enfocando nada más en los 30 días para sacar al inmigrante. Pues nos están, deberían ser las instituciones, deberían ir a los Chester, deberían ir a los Chester.
And you guys understand, but basically, instead of focusing on just getting people out within 30 days, focus on helping people be connected with job opportunities so that they can, in turn, leave the shelters because they have work to support themselves.
En realidad deberían ir a los Chester las instituciones, ayudar al inmigrante con los papeles y los que tengan los permisos de trabajo para conseguirles trabajo y así ellos podrán ser autónomos y no depender del Chester. Y así agilizarse. Yo creo que, en lo que se llama de concentrar, no, no, son los 30 días. Yo creo que es el tiempo que dura el migrante en la institución, las instituciones, tanto la alcaldía, movilizar con las empresas privadas y conseguirles trabajo a los inmigrantes que están en los Chester, los que tengan permiso de trabajo como yo, y los desalojando de los Chester, pero con trabajo, que es la idea. Porque no vamos nada más en farsa, nada más en solo los 30 días. Okay, pasaron los 30 días, y el inmigrante quiere buscar otro Chester.
Yeah, he's basically concerned, he's basically annoyed with, you know, because the focus has been on transitioning people in and out of the shelter system within the 30-day timeline, and not enough effort has been put into ensuring that they are employed, even when some of them actually do have the ability to work because he has his papers and hasn't been able to identify work, but is looking for work so that he can rent his own apartment and he can exit the shelter. And so he would rather that the attention be on helping him do that as opposed to being laser-focused on evicting him every 30 days. Gracias. Yo entiendo.
Bueno, y en realidad, en conclusión,
nosotros lo que queremos es, si de repente no se estén, nos pueden brindar mejor el apoyo, pues. Mejor el apoyo, informaciones, o también a veces sobre la comida. Comida un poquito, no vamos a darle la gracia a Dios porque nos dan, por lo menos, la oportunidad de comer, pero la comida a veces no son apropiada. Porque a veces nos dan, por ejemplo, un plátano, nos dan cereal, un pan, no da estas condiciones. Entonces uno, por lo menos, uno quiere una ayuda concreta para los documentos, y en la cual además nos dan solo un momento, un ticket, y no, por lo menos, no nos ayudan monetariamente con el sistema del metro, más que todo. Porque a veces tenemos que estar leyendo permiso a la policía, o saltar la baranda, o qué cosas, porque no, no brindan ese tipo de ayuda, pues. Eso es lo que queremos, pues.
Ustedes están ubicados aquí en Manhattan. No me digan dónde, pero están ubicados en el condado de Manhattan?
Nosotros estamos, yo puedo, yo estoy en el 220 West.
No me digas. No, no, no me digas. Está bien. Yo te puedo, yo le voy a dar mi tarjeta a finales de esto para que... Está bien, yo, yo te puedo, yo le voy a dar mi tarjeta a finales de esto para que nos pongamos en contacto para ver cómo le podemos ayudar a los dos. Muchísimas gracias por estar aquí hoy, hoy estamos, este, esta reunión hoy era, era porque uno de los colegas de nosotros está introduciendo una ley que eliminaría esa regla de implementar 30 o 60 días para desplazar a las personas que están en el shelter. Nosotros no creemos, ¿verdad?, que la ayuda debe de ser centralizada en ayudar, en asegurar que ustedes tengan la, un trabajo, ¿verdad?, y que puedan mantenerse, este, automáticamente sin, sin tener que depender del, del gobierno, como yo sé que muchos de ustedes quisieran. Pero tenemos que ayudarlos y apoyarlo ya que ustedes no son de este país y no entienden las leyes ni tampoco dónde ir. Y, y estamos, estamos todos de acuerdo en eso pero después de la reunión yo le doy mi tarjetita a, o David se la lleva un momentito para que me llamen a la oficina y entonces nosotros tratemos de, de comunicar o si no puedes dejar el número también de ustedes, yo también uso WhatsApp si es algo más, se la hace más fácil, comunícanos de esa manera.
Okay, mucha gracia.
So, you know, basically I think, you know, the gentleman just expressed, you know, a need for, you know, better food. He's very appreciative for the food that is being given because it's better than none, but it isn't, you know, enough. Sometimes they get a little pack of cereal, piece of bread and it's just, you know, nutritionally it's not, you know, the, the best meal for grown people. And so, you know, again, while he's appreciative, they could do better by that. And, you know, it's also requesting, emphasizing the need for more social services so that people are in shelter, helping redirect them and helping them, you know, start planning that life goal to self-sufficiency because that component is missing. Gracias. Yes, you can, you can say. Oh yeah, I'm sorry. We're going that way. Yes, ma'am. You're next, okay? Yes. Can you make sure that your mic is on? The red light? Yeah, just click.
No, there's no red, okay, now there is. My name is Anne Fausset Ambia. I'm a retired public interest attorney and I'm a member of an organization in Bay Ridge that has been going out to Floyd Bennett Field at least once a week since December. When we first, as you probably know Floyd Bennett Field is four miles in either direction from anything and there's no subways there, just the bus that runs down Flatbush Avenue. In the beginning, in December, we were bringing shoes and jackets because people didn't have them. We've been asked for blankets and medicines because of children's, the children being sick. So we've been bringing children's Tylenol and things like that. People are really cold in the tents and so that's the blankets. And then when the evictions started, we were asked for suitcases. But I want to talk about, and we're, our access to being able to bring things there is being severely restricted, which I can tell you more about if you want to know. But one of the things I haven't heard anybody talk about yet is mail. And I've met people from the Muslim Community Network who are doing work in the Bronx who told me that there are people in this places that they're going to are having the same problem. In Floyd Bennett Field, the mail comes in a huge box and it's dumped on a table. People cannot find their mail. I talked to five women on February 10th who told me, well, their ID cards that they have to show when they go through the gate will register when something's been mailed. So they told me that they were informed that on January 25th their ID NYC cards had been mailed and on February 10th they had not received them. And they can't, the mail isn't sorted, it's in huge piles. So they don't know if it's been stolen by someone else. One person told me she thought some of the guards were involved in bribery schemes for being able to get your mail. But when you add, so people can't even go to a post office with, there isn't one nearby, but they couldn't make arrangements to go to a post office to get mail because you need ID NYC to get, to be able to do that. So that, and then you, you add in that 60-day evictions, what's happening to people's mail? People are being dropped out of the syst, those people are not getting mail. So in addition to the lack of services that people are getting, they're missing, you know, being able to get to 30-day meetings, they're not getting any information about political asylum. One woman, when I took a photo, she had been given a list of four places that she would, could allegedly call to get an attorney who would help her with a polit, a political asylum case and she said she couldn't get through to anyone. I took a photo and called the four numbers myself and only was, got a response from one agency and I have the names, but she's right, you know, I got recorded messages in some of them saying, you know, we'll call you back. I never got a call back. One of them said, "We may not call you back because of the volume of calls we received" and they never called me back. Another one just had an automated voice thing that said, "Leave a message", and I did and never got a call back. And then the one place that I did get through after calling three times and it being busy told me that they only have a few countries where, that they represent people in. But as an attorney, I did political asylum cases in the 90s and it's a very specialized field. You cannot go in to, for a hearing and meet an attorney 30 days bef, I mean 30 minutes before your hearing and have them able to represent you adequately because you have to have proof. You know, when you're talking about being persecuted as a member of, you know, what, a protected group under, allegedly under New York, I mean, under US law, you have to be able to establish the evidence of one kind or another from the region that you're from. And I, one of the women I've talked to walked to the border from Ecuador. Her husband died in the Darien Gap. She is a shwar, she's from a jungle region in Ecuador that has had a lot of problems with oil and mining extraction that have polluted the land and people are being killed if they protest because the water's polluted. And those companies are no longer American, they're nationalized under the Ecuadorian government but nothing's changed in terms of what they're going through. She had two little children and that leads me to another issue which I've heard from many people.
We need to move on to the next person, but, but I want to thank you for that because I think you're absolutely right and it's something that didn't come up, the mail issue is strictly important because people are getting, you know, very important notifications and that's being lost in, in the transition. So thank you for, for highlighting, and then thank you for your donations and your, you know, ability to, to get in and out of the shelters to bring in goods to the families that need them or the individuals that need them.
Well, we're not being allowed in anymore.
Yeah, no, no, we should definitely talk about that. Thank you. Yes, go ahead.
Hello, my name is Christopher Leon Johnson and I am for the state of the 30-day, 60-day rule. What I believe about the mayor, what he's trying to do is ridiculous. Like he, like he wants this stuff because of the money, but he's just mad because Biden is not paying him back and he's out the, the Biden reelection campaign for the mayor's team. But I want to say this right now about this stuff. Where was, I want to know like, why didn't Alexa Viles, who's the immigration chair, talk about what happened recently with the legal immigrant shelters? She's the immigration chair, she should have brought this up because we have a couple of migrants here right now and I think they going through this too, I don't know, they probably are, with illegal migrant shelters where you have to pay X amount of money in a donation to stay. We don't know how they being treated, we don't know how, if they're being abused, sexually abused and I think the city council needs to bring about a hearing about sexual abuses in the shelter system related to the migrant committee in conjunction with the immigration committee. Now, what happened yesterday, it was an African immigrant who owns two businesses in Joanne Areola's district and Asa Felice's district. I didn't see these two here talk, say anything, they didn't even come to do a walkthrough, they didn't come at all. So I don't think they really care about the migrants other than you just say like deport, get rid of the migrants. I think it's kind of, it's kind of stupid to do, they're already here, you can't do anything about it. But I'm gonna make this point right now, like, the mayor, what he's trying to do is, he's trying to get Republican support. He's trying to get conservative and moderate support for reelection because he's scared of a potential primary, probably from Scott Stringer. And this is all it's about, he's, he's trying to appease the right, he's trying to get the Republican support. I think it's kind of stupid, but it just like, this is, this, the 30-day, 60-day rule need to stay. These people are here, there's nothing you can really do about it. You, you could say close the border all you want, that's a different topic, but they're already here, you can't do anything about it, it's just what it is. So I'm for the, I'm for the rule, keep it, please. Thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Ms. Ayala, I'm Tawaki Kamatsu. You, you represent Harlem, right? So basically I've been in two shelters in Harlem. I was assaulted in one of them on February 15th, I took six punches to my head. DHS keeps transferring me to shelters for, that are for mentally ill people. I don't have mental illness, I don't have a drug problem, I've never been convicted of any crime. So the point is, you're the chairwoman of this committee, what can you do to stop DHS from transferring people to known dangerous shelters? After I was assaulted, I went to the hospital, when I came back, my assailant was still there, he was still there the next day. I have a fair hearing today against DHS assigned to OTDA. There was supposed to be an earlier fair hearing on February 20th. The problem is OTDA sent me the scheduling notice one day after the fair hearing was supposed to occur. I talked to Ms. Park who lied to your face while she testified today. I asked her today, how come I didn't get the evidence packet for today's hearing? She totally ignored me. I've testified to you previously about that specific issue. I've also testified to you previously about the fact that HRA DHS won't let me in their doors to examine draft versions of proposed contract. There was one this week involving legal aid. So don't you think if I'm gonna have a fair hearing today, it would be helpful if I knew what that contract would entail to find out? When I was in the Bronx Housing Court, why a legal aid attorney told the judge, "Sorry, but we're not gonna represent him because this isn't our day to do that." So the point is, you're funding all these organizations, but at the end of the day, there's no oversight. You talked about like x-ray machines. The shelter at 55 West 110th Street by Central Park, you walk in the door, they didn't check my bag. So sarcastically asked them, "How many guns do you think I could fit in that like medium-sized duffel bag? How many knives?" They did that on three or four occasions, so you have video security cameras installed in the lobby. If you issue subpoena against BRC, the operator of that shelter, you can get the video. So again, I'm not gonna waste your time. This testimony, your team recently asked to intervene in a case, Judge Frank is the assigned judge to that case. He's also the same judge assigned to my case against HRA. So I'm going to ask Judge Frank, since when I come here to testify to you, I leave here and then I get six punches to my head only because people like you. Basically, your position that you guys take towards me is to hell with you.
Hello, okay. Sorry, I'm like kind of hot and cold at the same time, so bear with me a little bit. My name's Amea Buredevolu, I'm one, I'm a licensed social worker and I managed one of the first shelters, if not the first shelter for asylum seekers in New York City in Harlem from 2019 to 2023, but the shelter was there since 2011. And I just want to say I was pretty disgusted with the mayor's office and their inability to recognize all of the service providers, mostly black and brown that have been here doing this work for years. When I started managing the shelter, I was 25. So I don't really take excuses from other service providers putting out, you know, problematic policies and saying this is under the guise of care, it's not. As someone who's actually done that work on the ground and trained other social workers to, to do that work on the ground. So I have firsthand experience on how to provide trauma-informed care to asylum seekers through progressive shelter policies. I did this through the Trump administration's change in policies through COVID and through the mayor's emergency crisis. 75% of my clients received permanent housing after a year in New York City and for the past eight months I've been working alongside Malika mostly on a volunteer basis to support over 850 asylum seekers with IDs, health insurance, food assistance, clothing assistance, and legal support. I've also been working as a volunteer with legal providers to set up pro se clinics this spring in lieu of the city's services. I'm testifying again to pass the amendment to this bill. I'm especially concerned because the day after New Year's, so this January 2nd, people were woken up out of their bed and told to leave with nowhere to go a few days before one of the coldest blizzards of the year. I personally received phone calls from service providers and this is the first winter in five years that I haven't been able to provide housing. So it was especially heartbreaking being the one place where people Googled me from across, from other countries, press Googled me from everywhere and were able to find me but the mayor's office wasn't. I had more to say, can I go? Okay. So clients have told me that they've experienced nights sleeping on the street in blizzard conditions, struggled to find food and some people have been going through trash. And if provided stays, they were provided one night emergency spaces where 300 to 400 people are crammed into a room mostly filled with pews, no beds, no pillows, and limited heat. Most of these places do not adhere to the building and safety regulations that any other shelter or nonprofit would need to operate and receive funding. When I applied for House of Worship funding, we were told that we'd have to spend hundreds of thousand dollars on a space that was fully renovated, over millions of dollars in renovations, a church. And we had our space held in all the, I mean, the funding held in bureaucratic systems. My one-to-two staff team did not have the capacity to continue with our private funding and remain, and keep our shelter open. And the only other alternative without the city shelters is sleeping on the street where even for me this winter, dressed in snow gear, I can't imagine spending more than five to 10 minutes out on the street. Let alone someone who's faced persecution and death threats more than, about three times within the course of a year. As someone who's sheltered people from the cold, it breaks my heart that many people experienced their first winter on the streets without winter clothes in freezing temperatures. To file for asylum, you must fear persecution for your life and be on US soil at the time of filing the document I-589. Unlike refugees, asylum seekers are still being processed in the country and are therefore ineligible for most programs. They're not given refugee reallocation assistance, which is a federal budget line since the 1980s that provides temporary stipends to resettle in the, the US. They're also barred from SNAP, Medicaid, social security, and other programs until the I-589 is received by the federal government, put on a 180-day clock, and then a work authorization, authorization application is filed and then processed and mailed back. During these eight months, asylum seekers don't just wait in poverty, they wait in extreme poverty and are reliant on mutual aid and shelters to fill this gap of services. I'm confused why shelter limits don't take into consideration immigration policies that we know our clients are navigating. We know it takes 180 days for work authorization to process and we know migration happens during warm months and shelter needs are most important during winter. An asylum seeker without work authorization is 5.6 times more likely to suffer from hunger. For most asylum seekers, they're experiencing their first winter without any winter clothes and without access to comprehensive healthcare. Just this year, 80,000, over 80,000 migrants have arrived in New York City and almost 95% have not been informed that they have to file a I-589 form, which leaves asylum seekers in extreme poverty for longer stretches of time. Not only have people fled dire situations in their home country, but now they're also dealing with deportation and now housing insecurity in a new country where they fear for their lives once again. I'm confused to why funding to service providers is continuously restricted when New York City this year has $117 billion budget, which is more than most countries have. And I don't understand why individuals have to fill the gaps that the city services should be managing. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you to this panel for your testimony. If we inadvertently missed anyone who would like to testify in person, please visit the sergeant's table and complete a witness slip now. And if we have inadvertently missed anyone who would like to testify virtually, please use the Zoom raise hand function. Seeing that there's no one else, I want to note that written testimony, which will be reviewed by, in full by the committee staff, may be submitted to the record up to 72 hours after the close of this hearing by emailing it to testimony@council.nyc.gov. Deputy Speaker Ayala, we have concluded public testimony for this hearing.
Thank you, I want to take a moment to thank all of the individuals that came in to testify today. Obviously, we have a very broken system and there remains a lot of work to be done. But I think that, you know, if anything positive came out of today was the realization that there are so many generous and kind-hearted New Yorkers that will step in in time of need and in times when government is, is lacking in their responsibilities. So muchisima gracias por estar aquí, muchisima gracias también a todas las personas que vinieron hoy a testificar. With that, this hearing is adjourned. With that, this hearing is adjourned.